And we will start off with an agenda check. Any changes to the agenda? And we have any other... All right, well, then we move on to items from board members and general manager. Okay, Heidi.
This past month, Frank and I met with Nancy Newton and Steve Mo from City Springfield. That was a new assignment that was getting me this year. And we just chatted, kind of introduced ourselves, talked about how we just want to make sure that mind communication are open if anything arises and just got to know each other a little better.
Yeah, two items. Number one, I had a comment from some private property owners about our security staff and their interactions with campers on our facilities. They said they were so impressed with the professionalism and courtesy they treated these people with, and they wanted me to bring it up, that they did an incredibly good job. Thank you very much. I don't know who it was or anything, but they said it was really good. Secondly, I'd just like to say that I know in the past I've barked about graffiti and some of those things. Facilities have never looked better in 17 years. I think whoever's doing the maintenance of the facilities and keeping them looking good and keeping grass mowed and on all our land that we own and things like that, it's never been better. So, thank you very much on both fronts.
Be sure to pass that on to landscaping. You're doing a good job. Thank you.
Sure, I just want to acknowledge a letter that came in last fall, which was from a number of folks just encouraging us to... We all got that letter right from, I think it was from Sierra Club and a bunch of signatories. And I thought at some point, right now, but at some point, if we could speak to some of the things we're doing, because they're encouraging us to help centralize the RAMs to support IRP... Sorry, I'm trying to make sure I'm using the right acronym. IRA funds, incentives. And I think we're leaning into that. My understanding is that there's, those funds are going to the state first and they'll just, they're deciding how they want to disperse the funds. But I do think we're paying attention to that. I also think they were supporting the idea of increased support for low-income households. And I think this board has shown an interest in supporting low-income rental households especially. So, I think there's some good suggestions within that letter. We'd love to have, you know, maybe just a memo from staff just talking about some of those issues and what's going on. We want to acknowledge the effort and the praise we've got from those folks.
I'll go over there and say that they'd asked to meet with me and Rod and I, so later this month, they just haven't picked me. We'll get information.
I have one more. Well, two more. Aaron O'Leary Slodzowski had an interview on OPB, and I thought he did a really nice job representing EWEB's interests. He just was really graceful in doing my job there. And then I also want to acknowledge the reduction in peak power that we had from our work that went out. And for me, I don't know, I'd be interested in your thoughts is, you know, so much closer to the issue than I am, but interested in your thoughts about how, your perspective on it. It seems super encouraging to me, the amount of reduction. If I remember correctly, it was on the order of 10 to 15 megawatts reduction in peak. But what was the peak at the time?
So, Rod's got some information that he can run through here in just a second, some of the data percentages and that type of thing. I don't think we went into the particular event having an expectation of what just an out-of-the-blue request would generate. I think overall, we were pretty pleased with the response.
Yeah.
I don't know that, I think when you look at demand response over time, you have to look at patterns probably from other utilities as well as opposed to just the initial response. This was, because you can get burnout from those kinds of programs if you're asking for that every week, for example.
Sure.
And then we are, we're going to try to couple that with formal demand response programs and really targeting a lot of this work for 2026, which means we have work in 2024 and 2025 to get ready for it around rate design and understanding impacts and some of the other things. That even came up in the letter, and I'll comment in a little bit about the letter. But yeah, you want to run through some of the actual results? Well, we've got him captive.
Sure. So, the peaks are around 390, just short of 400. What we did, and this is a very precursory look without a lot of scientific statistical analysis that Brian's team will be cranking out, but we did, were able to compare Monday, which had the same temperature and load profile as Tuesday and Wednesday, only Tuesday and Wednesday we had asked for the reduction. So, if you look at the whole day on itself, you know, we were saying somewhere between 16 to 27 megawatts, just, and again, that's just a rough estimate for the hourly periods. In total, the range estimated reduction is somewhere between 2% and 9%, depending on the hours. So, one of the things we did show up was that it didn't just happen in the peak hour that we had called for, peak hours, with also some other times where it seemed that people just went ahead and, just across the board, and the time didn't reduce. So, but yeah, overall, we really don't know who heard the message and responded, so it certainly sets us up for some potential efforts in the future, I think, to find out how much we could expect, but also market penetration, if you will, in some greenfield kind of studies and those kind of things. So, how do we reach the right people?
I'm encouraged by it, encouraged that our customers are paying attention and willing to make changes and super excited to see what we can do with the main response as that pulls out over the next couple of years.
John Brodsky, do you have anything?
Nothing for me. However, if you could turn your camera on, that would help me out a little bit if I could see you, Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, I thought it was on. And then I just wanted to thank Frank for joining me at the River Road Neighborhood Association meeting. We went to that in early August, and it was a really good event with the neighbors there, asked great questions, got a chance to present on a number of our biggest, you know, topics and have good questions out of it. So, appreciate that they invited us and took the time to let us present on EWEB. And that's all I have for now. With that, I'll turn it over to General Manager Frank. Do you have anything?
Yeah, a few things, a few things to add. So, I would like to acknowledge there's been a number of different outreach events over the last month, including College Hill, for example, and the communications staff and the water staff. Put that on, got a good turnout on a relatively smoky day. I also wanted to thank our communications team and also Assistant General Manager Price for their work on this outreach that occurred as part of the request of the community that Commissioner McRae was referring to. That was a decision we made at 11:00 in the morning and implemented at 1:00 in the afternoon, and it was incredibly well done. It wasn't just to help us save, it provided a lot of good suggestions for the community as far as how they could participate. So, I really wanted to thank staff for that. We did, and the general manager's office also received the open letter from the Sierra Club, Fossil Free Eugene, and a number of other organizations. I think the specific merits of the details in that letter are something that we're going to have to evaluate as management and the board over time. It was very good public input, but a lot of those issues relate to each other. And so, some of them regarding the IRA funds, those are things that we have a group already looking at. There's a number of things that, and Jason will touch on, one of the ideas that came up in that letter around a central hub of information around incentives, which the state is actually putting together right now. So, there's a number of different things. But it's, I wouldn't recommend we pull all of the specifics out of those letters, that letter, and address them individually, but talk a little bit more about the process that we're going to use that letter for, which is to incorporate it in rate design discussions that we're going to have to have, for example, over the next several, really probably a year and a half or so, a lot of that will come to the board and we'll be working on. So, but yeah, we did receive that letter. And then, just a final note, September is National Preparedness Month, and so look for a number of different communications from EWEB on emergency preparedness and other topics over the course of the next few weeks. Thank you, President Carlson.
Not, then we will move on to correspondence.
Yeah, I think this is my item as well. So, really appreciate the fact that we can do this early in the meeting and bring these things up, first of all, while the board is nice and fresh and full of ideas, but also so that staff can be available. Sorry, it's just feeling a little feisty. But also gives staff the opportunity to hear your feedback early in the meeting. There were three items in your correspondence package this evening. One was informational, the Climate Guidebook and its contents, which is very encyclopedia-oriented, did launch. You can't find it on the website, there's the link there, or you can just go to the website and search Climate Guidebook, and it'll provide the link for you. A lot of good information in there. The other two items, we're asking for a little bit of guidance on, and you can either provide that this evening or during our individual check-ins. We're a little bit ahead of schedule as far as getting feedback, getting a version of the diversity, equity, and inclusion policy back to the board. We had talked about October, we actually did it this month. I'm not sure, Commissioner Schlossberg, how exciting we made it. We did try to take the, some of the engineering language out of it and some of the dryness out of it, but I think Rod, Kelly, and I feel like we landed in a pretty good place with it. We expanded some of the definitions, and I'll give you just one example. When we talked about products and services, we really included information, programs, the delivery of electricity and water. We expanded the definition of products and services as well as refined some of those other definitions based on your feedback from a couple of weeks ago. But you can provide guidance tonight or in our check-ins for that. And barring any major shifts in direction there, we would like to bring it back to the board in October for your approval. The other one, we're looking for some feedback, Kira Hutchins in particular, who's our HR manager, on the process for the general manager's performance evaluation. There are some aspects to this that put pressure back on myself and the board at the beginning of each year to define not only the organizational goals, but put forth some of the performance metrics for the general manager to be evaluated as well. And then the rest of it is in the memo as far as how it flows from there. What's different from what we've done now is that we typically put a lot of emphasis on the performance of the organization and the organizational goals, but there can be separate evaluation criteria for the general manager. All the suggestions in there are consistent with existing policy that we have. So, any comments or guidance or direction this evening would be appreciated, otherwise I'll hit you up during our check-ins. Send it back to you, President Carlson.
Yeah, a question on the performance evaluation. Is that something that we'll talk about as a board prior to evaluation, or is that something that is, that's what we'll follow during evaluation time?
Quite sure it's a question, other than the way the process would work would be at the beginning of the year when we're going through our organizational goals for the year. That would also be the opportune time for the board and the general manager to work out. In fact, I would suppose that most general managers would put forth some ideas as well as board members would put forth ideas for the general manager's criteria in the evaluation. And then that would be for that year. And then that criteria would be used during the evaluation process itself. So, depending on the situation or the priorities of the board at the time, that could shift around year by year.
That makes sense, thank you.
Okay, so, I'll jump in. I really appreciate the updates to the DEI policy. To me, it does feel like it's more inspiring and encompasses a little bit more, doesn't feel as engineering-related, so I appreciate that.
You're all taken.
Hey, we all have our strengths, right? But I think it's definitely improved. I also like the points that were made in front of it about the implementation and what that looks like. So, I'm excited for the rest of that work there and appreciate that you turned it around so quickly. Have anything else, Heidi?
My comment is just on your evaluation. And I know that every year somehow it just seems to like be there, like we're not prepared even though we have been given warning. I just want to make sure that in, like, January, maybe, we have something on the agenda where we just talk about what the process is going to look like. And I'll only speak for myself, but one thing about it that's so awkward is that I don't, in my day job, I'm not usually evaluating the head of a large organization, and so, and we also don't work directly with you. So, maybe just having a little bit more guidance and just some more thoughtful time around that process before we delve into it.
Yeah, I absolutely agree. I think that's necessary. I think also the establishment of the annual performance criteria will provide opportunities to have quarterly check-ins on this as well. I think that if you, performance management doesn't occur once a year, it should occur on a routine, regular basis, and feedback is an important part of the job, both from the commissioner's perspectives as well as my perspective. So, really appreciate that, and I think, I think that's absolutely right, what the criteria should be. We can clarify that.
Any comments, then? We will move on from correspondence and move into public input. I will note that we had testimony that was submitted electronically from Will Rutherford. So, it is, however, are there, is it still July to now, the public input?
About Will Rutherford, you said you had testimony submitted by Will in the last call.
It was the link to the video.
So, if some of us don't think that putting that video over there, how do we look at that?
Yeah, please.
I think we established a precedent. So, somebody wants to come in here and talk about hemp insulation and have a three-hour presentation, gets part of the record, private advertising on that, right? That advertises private entities and things that may or may not be, to me, is not appropriate to do that, especially given some of the things I saw in there that were pretty accusatory on the board and things that said that I think were misinformation and that we haven't had a chance to talk to the maker of that to have some of those things refuted, because I think there's a lot of misinformation in that document.
Anybody can submit whatever they want of the public testimony portion of it, though. We've never...
Correct, but if we're going to allow a 30-minute video to be made part of the record, now we established a precedent, advertising for private companies on it, is that something that's acceptable in public record?
I don't know that we have any policy against or for it, but I mean, at this point, I don't think we do have any policy against it.
Yeah, there's, it's, you're correct, the policy has not really been precise through the years. We have had other people through the years submit hundreds of pages of, and we have typically characterized that as public input was provided. These are, our minutes are action minutes, and so we have typically limited that to a couple hundred words, and if there's a link in there, then others have provided links to information that we may or may not agree with. If we want to dive into that further, we should probably bring that up as an agenda item to clarify the public input process, because I think that is covered in board policy.
I haven't personally seen it, and I just looked at my email again, I'm not sure that I received it, so I'm shooting blind here, but it does seem like if we have, we have to follow whatever policies are. So, if we have some thoughts on how that should be set up differently, then we should set up a policy and make sure that it's actually in line with the laws and regulations of whatever public commenting is.
Would you like, we can do a policy review before we submit those in a minute? If the board is open to that.
Holy board, I have just one.
I just saw three of them.
John?
John Brodsky, comments?
Yeah, the only thing that I would say to this would be, you know, we often say that if you don't get a response to your public testimony at this thing, I mean, EWEB staff member will get back to you. I think it would be definitely appropriate for an EWEB staff member to get, contact the maker of the video and try to give him some perspectives that may not have been represented in the video that we're putting a link into, and see if there would be a response from him on that. And just a thought.
I would just, there's a difference here between what's provided as public testimony, which is going to be governed by board policy, and how the organization responds to the massive amount of misinformation that's flying around in the world. And we're going to have to do almost, you know, unique assessments as to the impact of that information on the organization, both the reach and the impact, and work with our communications department to decide when and how we might respond. That's an example of one where we may choose not to glorify it with a response, unless could be more in that case.
So, let me go over here to the Facility and Safety Awareness, we're going to have a facility and safety awareness and meeting logistics briefing. Thank you for attending this evening's board meeting. EWEB management and subject matter experts are here with us in the room and virtually. During tonight's presentation, remote contributors will appear on the screen. Please make sure to speak loudly and clearly so everyone can hear you. Guests are invited to sign up at the table at the back of the room if they wish to provide public testimony. Their access is limited to the board, meeting room, and restrooms. Restrooms are located on the first floor, exit through the right-hand door at the back of the room and across the hallway. In case of an emergency, such as a fire alarm, exit through the glass door at the back of the room unless it is not safe to do so. The alternate emergency exit is located at the rear of the building just beyond the restrooms. During evacuation, follow staff's instructions and stay together for safety. Tonight's meeting will be recorded, the recording has already started. Meeting room will be muted during break. Aside from that period, virtual participants on screen and in public audience will be able to hear conversation in the room if the public meeting is disconnected. When your name is called, in-person speakers are invited to stand over at next to the podium. Please state your name, optionally your address or ward. Each speaker will be offered three minutes to present their testimony. Please keep track of time. In-person speakers can watch the timer at the front of the room. Although, I'm not sure they can see that at this stage, you know, maybe you're not in the picture of understanding the podium. All speakers can listen for an audio notification when your time has lapsed. If you are participating by telephone, remember to unmute your call, we don't have anybody participating by telephone. After all testimony is heard, the commissioner will have an opportunity to speak if they choose, although by policy we do not engage in a back-end system. Please note the failure of the commissioner to speak shall not be construed as supportive or opposition to any speaker's testimony. The board may request staff to respond to specific questions or comments posed by the public. Those responses, which are for the public good, may be posted on EWEB's internet site. Okay, and thank you for updating the form. We had a change in the form, so that if people would like to be contacted, we actually do that. So, thank you, I appreciate that update. So, the only person we have that has signed up is Nadine Scott. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Nadine Scott, homeowner on Lieberg Lake, real estate broker, past president of the Mackenzie Chamber of Commerce, correspondent secretary for the Mackenzie-Cleawatta Coalition, and an EWEB rate payer. I want to thank Adam Spencer for responding to some questions regarding the decommissioning of the Lieberg power canals on the Lieberg neighborhood page. It was very helpful. At the last meeting, I asked why the dam, bridge, fish hatchery, fish ladders in Lieberg Lake must be removed. It's my understanding the dam does not produce any power. Therefore, why is this project part of the decommissioning of the Lieberg power canals? It should be a separate topic and one that's valued carefully as it's going to affect tourism, businesses, property values, fish, wildlife, and then it would be taking away a historical landmark. Do you have figures for just the dam and the lake project, separate from the Lieberg canal projects? I believe if you separate out the cost of removing the dam, if it does not have asbestos in it and just maintaining what you already have, it would turn out to be a lot less money for your rate payers than the cost of removing everything. I would appreciate seeing the costs separated out and the cost of repairs and maintenance, vice versa, the removal of it all. Regarding removing it, the road would have to be rerouted. Your plan to reroute it over the historical Good Passage Covered Bridge, a sign was put up on the Good Passage Bridge this week that said, "Slow down, speed shakes the deck and causes damage to the bridge. Stop the shake, save the bridge." And yet you're planning to increase the traffic on the bridge considerably. Your meeting in August, we had a speaker, Kurt Miller, from Northwest Riverfront Properties. He stated that the loss of the salmon runs is not from the dams with fish hatcheries and fish ladders, but from climate change in the ocean. He also said that he felt fish hatcheries and fish ladders would be a necessity for the future of the salmon runs. Again, you're removing something we already have. Tourism is the main economy of the Mackenzie River Valley. Lieberg Lake, the fish hatchery, and the EWEB park. Over 100,000 cars cross over that Lieberg Dam Bridge every year. It's an estimate of about 200 people to a car. Tourism is the main economy of the Mackenzie River Valley. Taking that away from the Mackenzie River Valley would be a huge loss to the businesses and the economy. I would like to know how we can have our questions answered as you don't allow Q and A on your agendas. as you don't allow Q and A on your agendas. Thank you.
Say thanks for the testimony and for coming all the way down to talk with us. There is a route to get questions answered and I trust that staff will follow up with you. That is, we've said that explicitly, that staff will follow up if you don't get your questions answered here. I know you posed a bunch of questions that are mostly technical in nature. So I think the staff communicating with you and sharing the answers is probably the best way for you to get the information you need.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Sure.
One comment. Because we've been hearing similar questions or similar comments, and I know we touched upon this before and we have a Q page, but I just think if there's a way to, like, have frequently asked questions, just an easier way so maybe people don't have to sort through the whole thing if there are questions that we tend to get multiple times. I don't know how to do that, but maybe questions for people who live in the area or something like that.
Carlson, just a couple of comments and I'll mention this to the board and the audience as well. There's a reason that the dam's included in the decision and that's that the assets, including transmission, generation, and the dam, are included in the FERC license that we are deciding to -- that we have made a decision on relative to the future generation at that site. There are probably three primary reasons that it would be naive to think that that dam will remain at the end of the process. One of that is FERC has no history whatsoever and would very likely oppose that a dam whose primary purpose is to generate electricity, when that electricity and that primary purpose is removed, FERC will very likely not support anything other than its removal. The second thing, there will be just as many people interested in removing that dam for fish and wildlife reasons from third parties, including government organizations and non-government organizations that will be part of the evaluation process. And then thirdly, it would make no sense for E-Web to own, operate, and maintain and deal with the risk of an asset that does not support our primary mission. And so when you combine those three things, it is really naive to think at the end of a process that the dam would remain. Now that said, really coming to the board at this point in time, lobbying for specific outcomes is really premature. The government and -- sorry, the regulated process that FERC will have oversight and E-Web will run that will take several years will provide opportunities for stakeholders to participate in the ultimate outcome. And so all those things combined kind of lead us to the fact that we can listen to testimony, but the process, which will be a highly public regulated process, will provide opportunities for that to happen. Relative to transportation issues, we have talked to Lane County, who's the transportation authority in the area. Ultimately, it will be their decision what transportation options are evaluated and eventually decided upon. We have another meeting with Lane County in October. They are very aware of it. They know that this is an issue that they're going to have to address and so we're going to work with them in good partnership to address the transportation issue specifically, for example. So all of these will be worked out over time, but to lobby you at this time is really premature. That will come out in the process. But there are reasons why the dam will very likely be removed once the decision was made to not generate electricity at that facility.
Thank you, Frank. That was what I was going to comment on because I remember before we made the decision, I asked a number of us, I asked, what could we keep the dam and get rid of the power generation? And the answer was no. So.
And we will continue to update the frequently answered questions. We'll put those in order of frequently asked potentially as those come up. But just wanted to clarify that there's a very formal reason and formal process that's going to drive the outcome.
Any other questions? So we will move on to approval of Consent Calendar A. I actually have a note with a little tiny typo but I'm still going to get it. Page 31 of our board packet. It just has a line where it says, Mr. Lawson, Mr. Lawson, said they could change committee. I don't know. It seems like maybe that's -- oh, maybe it's not. Never mind. Now that I've read it out loud and not at 3:00 a.m., it's fine.
Move to a document.
Thank you. All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Next up, approval of Consent Calendar B.
I'd like to ask just a question about one item. So if I can pull the frame shadow settlement solution that has Aaron Volmer and Deborah Hart's names. I don't know the number. I'm sorry. The one with the power settlements and consulting services, LLC.
Yeah, was that on number A?
Oh, that was on number A.
Already approved that one.
Yeah, already approved that.
That's okay. My question was actually more for clarification, not because I had any opposite. So I'll just follow up by email to get my questions answered on that. Carry on.
Deborah Hart, I know her is available and/or Aaron. Well, I see Deborah right now. If you wanted to ask it, it's probably most efficient if you want to ask it.
Yeah, if I can. Thanks. No opposition to the contract. I'm just looking to better understand the service that we're hiring for because it's not totally clear to me. I'm wondering if you can help me by describing -- I'm just not quite understanding what they do. I'm sorry.
No apologies. And I should maybe let Aaron answer this question since it is his staff person. But when BPA moved to the EIM in five-minute increments, and I seen Aaron up, it became necessary for us to have a product that would help us balance to their records in order to ensure that we were making the appropriate payments to BPA. We used to do that manually, but the volumes of data that those intervals create make it -- I don't want to say impossible, but exceedingly challenging to do with any accuracy manually. And so that is really part of the first phase of this. And Aaron, do you want to chime in?
Sure. Yeah. So essentially, we're signing up for a computer application here. Going to be software as a service. And as Deborah said, we're in the energy imbalance markets. The BPA has now joined. We're getting information meter data in five-minute increments. So far more massive amount of data that we need to validate in order to make sure that we're paying BPA the right dollar amount month to month. So yeah, end of the day, it's a software application that helps us do the work.
Great. Thank you very much. I appreciate the clarification. Thanks.
Then we will move on to the next Consent Calendar B. Does anybody else want to pull anything? I would like to pull number five. Move to that Consent Calendar B minus number five.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye. All right, motion passes. All right, number five. I wanted to find out a little bit more about -- so this is the McLean and Company for a human resource research and advisory membership services. I'm curious. So since the contract amount is for 212, and then down below it's talking about 250,000. I think this is the one. Doesn't seem to say it in the version that I'm currently looking at. I'm just curious a little bit more about what this project is. Is this something that we've done in the past? It sounds like an awful lot.
Selena or Kira, come in.
Sure.
Hi.
Good evening. Sorry, Kira, do you want to go?
Yeah, I can go ahead and take it.
Perfect. Thank you.
Commissioner Carlson, this is a service we have been using for the last three years for the Workforce Services Group. They provide advisory services and resources related to HR and personnel type of items. That includes engagement surveys, new hire surveys, exit surveys. They offer a DEI advisory service that we are hoping to add into the contract. And so this request is for a contract that would be reaching the 212,000 over the span of the five-year period. So it's broken down about 40,000 per year.
Actually, my other question is on the CAC services, which was also in the first, was in Consent Calendar A. For HR, so one second. The commercial insurance broker services. This is actually. Okay.
I can take that one. I don't have my Consent Calendar pulled up at the moment, but our commercial insurance brokerage services is a contract that we have had for years and years and years and we have extended it. It does not require -- it's not required to go out for bid, but we have done that in the past. We've extended the contract because of the onset of something called Palyvorgin. They helped us negotiate with the standard insurance to see that through. They were also on board for our union negotiations. They've been our provider for the last many years and provide insurance brokerage services for most of the public employers in the region and also up in the state of Washington.
There was a very wide range of bids on that, from 182 to 575,000. And I noticed on this one, we ended up with the middle range, one at 278. I was just curious if we had a compare. One thousand, one hundred over the other two that were lower priced and also more low.
Oh, you know what? I think you might be looking at insurance brokers that are outside of the HR realm. Is that right?
Yeah, the CAC is the -- the exact name is the CAC Specialty for Commercial Brokerage.
Wrong one. I apologize. That one would be Sarah Goresingers.
I'm sorry. I didn't quite catch the question, but it sounds like it's about the commercial broker services.
Yes. Yeah. Is this -- so that had a pretty wide range.
In the pricing?
The lowest bid was like 185,000 and the highest bid was 575. We ended up going with the one who was in the middle, 270. It had the highest ranking RFP. But I just noticed that the other two had lower prices and were also low. And so I had some questions about that. And I'm sorry I didn't catch you on the first round here.
Yeah, I can let you know that on the two that were the lowest price, one of them was not a focus on utility commercial broker services so they didn't have the experience we were looking for. And then on the other one, they did have a utility focus, but their pricing was structured in a way that they would provide us a base price for just the purchase and marketing of our insurance products that we were looking for. But they had a model that any additional services would cost extra. So for example, if we had a claim, they would charge us for processing and managing that claim for us. So when we looked at the overall value of what we would be receiving, we anticipated that would be significantly higher than what was included in the actual request proposal. So that's based on the overall value of what they were offering. We felt like the CAC was the right price with the right marketed products for us.
Great. Well, thank you. I really appreciate the answer. So we can move back on number five then. McLean and Company, the last item remaining. Move to approve item five on Consent Calendar B.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. She passes. We will move on to.
Can I?
Yes.
Really quickly. I just wanted to acknowledge somebody that's in the crowd. It's Deborah Smith. Worked for E-Web for 20 years, Assistant General Manager, and now she's the General Manager, I think, of Seattle City Light. And welcome back. It's good to see you.
Thank you. I just wrote someone. I said, "I'm sitting at an E-Web board meeting because I needed to get my fix."
So sorry.
Did I read recently that there was a retirement party? Maybe not.
Maybe. Maybe. I think I overlapped with you and I think we met one time at an APPA event not long after you went on the board.
Thank you so much for joining this evening. Okay.
Just don't overdose on that fix, all right? Give us a second.
All right. Next up, we have the -- findings from the Pacific Northwest Utility Conference. Crystal and Elisa Lee.
Hi.
Hello.
Thank you. Well, it's really nice to be here with you. I thought maybe Deborah showed up to support us. And we really appreciate the invite to share Northwest Pacific Utility perspective about changes in the industry. I'm Crystal Ball, the Executive Director of the Pacific Northwest Utilities Conference Committee and what we, many of us, call, without saying a long name, PNC. It's actually -- it's one of those acronyms. And my partner, Lisa Seelig, is here. She is the Analytics and Policy Director. And together, we are PNC. And our organization has been going through some transition, but we are here to talk about some big changes that we're seeing in the industry. So I'll begin with the big picture. The energy sector is going through significant transformation and efforts to reduce greenhouse gas emissions from electricity production are replacing fossil fuels with more renewable resources and other non-emitting resources. Decarbonization is also increasing the demand for electricity economy-wide. And by that, I mean from changes in transportation with electric vehicles and potentially heating. Federal legislation is providing incentives for renewable energy development and it's also boosting the U.S. economy and manufacturing. So here in the Pacific Northwest, there is an incredible increase in electricity demand due to industrial loads, including data center services. Also, extreme weather is impacting the grid more frequently and increasing the need to build resilience. Elisa and I, we are here to share a regional perspective tonight. We're going to talk about three things. First, we're going to explain the purpose of the Northwest Regional Forecast. And I understand you have a copy of that report. Second, we're -- Second, we're going to tell you and walk you through the major differences that we saw between last year's forecast and this year's forecast. Third, we're going to talk about what utilities in the region are doing in increased coordination during this period of tremendous change in our industry. So I want to start with some background, and I'm also looking at the time. And so I'll go quickly. PNC is a not-for-profit trade association. We have about 50 members. Consumer-owned utilities in the Pacific Northwest and investor-owned utilities are members of PNC, including some industry partners like Energy Northwest and PowerX in Canada. These members share a common interest in the efficacy and reliability of the Pacific Northwest power grid. And we do have a Board of Directors. It is elected by the respective membership groups, and they serve for a term of two years. Frank and Deborah are members of the PNC Board, and I appreciate their commitment to our organization. We have a long history of collaboration in our region, and we have a PNC, a reputation for bringing people together. And it's one of the reasons why I was excited about working at PNC. So for those of you who know me, you know that I'm passionate about bringing people together. And that's the mission of our organization. While we have a long history, we formed many, many years ago. In 1980, so 40 years ago, we became actively involved in regional planning efforts. And we tracked what was going on at the Northwest Power Conservation Council and got involved in evaluating those power plans, those 20-year regional power plans. That's an example of our history. So while the issues in the Northwest have changed over the years, PNC's strength has endured because of its members who come together to build relationships, research problems, and learn from each other. Elisa and I are really good partners. We have a lot of experience in the industry representing the Bonneville Power, or working, having worked for, sorry, not representing, having worked for the Bonneville Power Administration, Seattle City Light, and Puget Sound Energy. So we've got the bases covered. And we have a shared vision for PNC. And that vision is for PNC to be a respected forum where members come together to share information, find common ground, and develop regional solutions that support the evolution in our industry safely, reliably, and affordably. Thank you. So with that background about what PNC is, we want to explain the purpose of the Northwest Regional Forecast. So if you think about the Northwest and you think about the resources in this region, it is very interconnected. And Northwest Power Utilities understood even back then how interconnected it was and how important it was to work together. And this Northwest Regional Forecast is something that this group of utilities has been producing for over 70 years. It is important because it tracks trends in loads and resources from a utilities perspective. And the way that it works really is we ask our members to provide information to us, and we aggregate that information, and we produce a report. Not a lot of work goes into it. It's not that simple. But we're here to share what we saw this year compared to last year. And so it's a consistent approach, and it allows us to identify trends and serves as a regional barometer. It is, you know, again, the Northwest Power Act, the 1980 Northwest Power Act footprint in the region is defined as the four Northwest states. And it largely resembles the service territory of the Bonneville Power Administration. So with that explanation of the purpose of this document, we want to share with you the big changes that we saw from just last year to this year. This was our first year putting this report together. As I mentioned, PNC has been going through a transition. I was selected by the Board of Directors just in November last year to be the Executive Director, and I had been working at PNC for almost a year. Elisa joined us shortly after I came to PNC. And so when we started pulling this information together, we were a little. We definitely wanted to share what we were seeing with our members because it was very, very different than what we had seen before. And there are four big changes that we did share through our System Planning Committee and with our board to make sure that, you know, this was something that utilities were becoming more certain about. And that's why it was showing up this year in our Northwest Regional Forecast. So the four big changes really is rapidly growing load expected over the next five years, with likely more load expected. Energy efficiency, long history of conserving energy in this region. And that is foundational. And I was listening to the report about the consumers here in Eugene who responded to that heat wave and reduced their demand. And we are seeing demand response really projected to grow in this 10-year outlook. So that's the second thing. Energy efficiency really foundational, and then demand response starting to grow. Utilities starting to really lean forward and depend on that demand response. So with those loads and even with that energy efficiency and demand response, we're seeing growing deficits. And on a regional basis, you know, if this isn't addressed, then these will continue to create real challenges in our region. But we are seeing utilities stepping up their plans for renewable resources, energy storage, and other flexible, non-emitting resources that can provide that capacity for creating a reliable system. So again, those are the four big changes. I'm going to turn it over to Elisa to walk you through these changes. And we've got some visuals, and we welcome questions. Elisa?
Yeah, thanks, Crystal. So Crystal talked to you about the changes that we're seeing. And so I'm going to walk you through load and resources and deficits now. And so we're going to first start with load. And we have here the 2023 forecast, which is this rapidly increasing load, which is in the solid, and the dashed is the 2022 forecast. And we're talking about a remarkable 20% increase over the next five years. And so this is something that, you know, is an aggregate picture. It's an incredible change. And as Crystal said, much of that load is attributed to new industrial customers, solidifying plans and schedules for development, and primarily data centers. But what is interesting with this load forecast is that it flattens out over the latter five years, which indicates that electrification and climate change effects may still not be fully embedded in here, or the timing at which, maybe it's beyond the 10-year horizon that we're looking at where it will show up. And so we need to be thinking about this when we think about the infrastructure that's going to be needed to expand the grid, to meet these increasing loads. And so then, annual energy, you know, we're showing you here annual energy in the green at the bottom, summer peak. And the orange and in the blue, the winter peak. Winter peak, we're still a winter peaking area, but, you know, summer peaks are growing, and it crosses over what we last year expected in the forecast. So our forecast in summer is really starting to increase as well. The other thing to think about when you look at this rapidly growing load, not every utility is experiencing growth at the same rate. So we have a smaller segment of the load that is growing more quickly. So you have to look at what's going on in your own community, too, to know what's going on. But this regional picture is important because we're an interconnected electricity. Now, another interesting thing about this load forecast, and like Crystal said, we had to really talk to everybody and verify what was going on and make sure we're putting out the right signal, is that loads have not, the growth rate for this, for loads have not been this high since the early 1980s. And that's something that we said, what's going on? And the five-year growth rate, we've talked about, it's bigger. The red line is a little bigger than the blue line. And so what we have on the bottom is the forecast year. And we can look at data going back as far as 1961 to say, how is load, how's load been growing? And, you know, why is driving this? Well, the clean energy transition, the Internet of Things, and Big Data and artificial intelligence are driving, factors driving load today. In terms of the clean energy transition, more manufacturing is needed locally. And, you know, we know what's going on with data centers and AI. And there is just a need to have those close to load. Also, what we did see, though, in the past, you know, regional energy efficiency investments and updated building codes and standards tempered growth over the last four decades. So you have this flattening out, you had an industrial kind of age, but, you know, maybe it didn't grow quite as fast. So we're trying to figure out where is load growth going? And we want to make sure that we're sending the right signals. And so it's important to get the utility and the region together and understand these trends. Crystal talked about energy efficiency being a mainstay. So what we look at on the right in the blue is the 2023 forecast. And it is projecting a little more cumulative energy efficiency over the next 10 years compared to the previous five forecasts. And this is important. It's a big part of that load. It's actually embedded within that load forecast. So we see what utilities are thinking about. And, you know, it's about a little shy of 2,000 megawatts out of the load that was the peak, that was, you know, by the end, reaching 40,000 megawatts in the winter. So still, it's part of the solution, and we'll kind of keep that in perspective. But it's not going to meet all of the load growth that's expected. Hydro power, and this is a chart that shows our existing resource stack. On the left is the nameplate capacity. That's what's installed and what could be the maximum generation expected out of the unit. On the right is what's expected annually to generate. And so that's about, you know, half of that game plate capacity. And that in part is because we're a hydro-dominated region, and that's driven by the fuel. We have a clock, basically, with these, and clean to, we start at 12 o'clock, clean resources, and work our way around the clock and to emitting resources. And what we can see is that in the Northwest, that we are largely a clean, clean region. And hydro power provides that strong foundation. But the other thing we see is that we know we're in the part of this clean energy transition. And so we expect that wind and solar will start to play an increasing role in needing that clean generation. But we're also thinking about how are we going to meet those peak loads with capacity resources? And to meet the peak, we have, you know, 55,000 megawatts of nameplate. But resources don't contribute on that peak day up to that amount of capacity, nameplate capacity. So I want to kind of put a number in your head is, you know, for winter, that's about 38,000 megawatts. So you're going to have to step down. And then the summer, we're expecting from those same resources about 35,000 megawatts. So, you know, because the fuel is just not there all the time. And so those are just important things to keep in mind. Now, this is our foundation, what we started out today, what's existing and committed. And what we also know is that we are on the path to carbonizing power supply. And if you look at the brown, the brown block at the bottom, that's what the utility, in this forecast, the Northwest utility remaining coal. You see the dashed lines, and you'll see the utility plant exits from coal. And that is, you know, is driving our need for resources as well. So we have increasing load, we have coal exits that are happening. So you combine those together, and that is driving need for resources. Now, I'm going to walk you through, what does that mean when you put it all together? We have the resources that are about 55,000 megawatts, but they don't contribute all the time. We have the loads that grow, you know, winter peak almost to 40,000 megawatts. And then we have exits from coal. And, you know, by 2026, we're expecting almost 5,000 megawatts of exits of coal since 2019. We're going to put that all together and look at some trends. And is the region going to be able to meet its capacity obligations in the winter and summer? What I'm showing you first is the 2019 to 2022 reports. And these show in blue, winter deficits, and then yellow, orange are the summer deficits. I'm going to layer on today's, and what we see are growing deficits. So you see, so as you go down further, that's a deeper deficit. So by 2032, expect a summer deficit of 11,000 megawatts. And winter is a little bit less. This deficit, what do we mean by deficit? It's that peak load plus a planning margin for uncertainty. So we don't just have to meet that, meet our load, we have to meet uncertainty in that load. This load forecast, and this load forecast is a one in two forecast. So what we need, we know that there's a 50% chance of higher or lower, we've got a plan for that uncertainty load. Also, resources, they don't operate all the time. If you have a forecast of, you're going to have this much fuel, you know, they still also have a planned target. So those, we're also accounting, if you actually look at this picture. What we're really trying to show is that trend over time, and that trend is the growing deficit. And this is only looking at our existing and committed resources that I showed you. So what we need is some more resources. So how are we going to get there? Because these deficits are growing, and that's an important consideration. And I also want to leave you with why these deficits are growing. They're, you know, compared to last year, we have the coal shrinking, we have loads are growing. And it indicates that the region doesn't have the surplus that it used to. So, you know, that's another thing that we learned from what I said. Forecast of energy efficiency is a case that we saw that was happening, that many of these deficits were kind of in the same area. And with all of that, we're going to need some investment in new, new resources. And we'll talk about that next up. Renewables and storage are dominating the plans for the utilities. On the left side, we have the 2022 forecast. On the right side, we have the 2023 forecast. On the left side, we need about. On the left side, we need about 1,000, 12,000 megawatts of new nameplate resources. So this is not how they're going to be, but it's the nameplate, it's the infrastructure that needs investment. On the right side, you can see that utilities are stepping up their plans. They said, oh, we need 17, you know, we need now more resources. So they stepped it up. However, we look at this 17,000 megawatts. Summer, we might only expect this to contribute 6,000 megawatts, we can still leave another 5,000 megawatts. Because the region could actually need 30,000 more megawatts to meet that deficit that we showed in the beginning. So this is really significant change. Maybe the other thing to think about, 17,000 megawatts is a third of our existing capacity that we have in that in the next 10 years, if we're going to 17,000 megawatts more resources to fill that gap, we need a substantial amount of new resource as we move forward. So we have, before I take it to Crystal to explain what the utilities are doing, what we really have is, you know, we have to increase our, our resources by a third. We have to have a transition that's happening, that those deficits are really something that we haven't been used to because right now we have the coal moving away. But to make clean energy transition, we're going to see less gas. So we can imagine that we're going to start seeing growing deficits. These aren't necessarily bad, but it's an indication of that transition that we're seeking. It's just can we keep pace with that change? And so utilities need to put in a lot of work to keep pace with that change.
Thanks, Eliza. I'm aware of the time, want to get to your questions, so I'll wrap up. We, you know, group aid is transition. Our industry is our new solutions and increased coordination. And we are seeing utilities invest in those tools remaining in the government and states for those new solutions. We're seeing utilities get together in ways that they, in ways that they haven't done before. So federal funding is expected to advance clean energy technologies and help moderate monastic grid. But we don't really figure that this forecast is a snapshot in time. And then we recently, utilities last year. And so this forecast doesn't include new technologies, but we expect that we will see them as utilities plan for this future. Utilities are also strategically focused on transmission solutions and we've talked a lot about that at the panel meetings. And we see the region coming together in a gentle way. The Northwest doesn't have a regional approach that organized, regional approach like others in, in the United States. But we do see utilities getting together to address some of the, a regional transmission organization, a reorganized approach does. And utilities are taking some steps to address resource adequately. That and designing requirements and again, planning and construction. And we do see utilities doing their transmission in the future. So it really is hard to predict the future, even for me, for the global. But what we do see is utilities relying more on these powerful partnerships to plan for the future. So we appreciate the opportunity to share this information, to give you a regional perspective of what's going on in the long run.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the information and all kind of questions, any of the listeners looking for questions? Okay.
I have a really big question. So thank you for your presentation. And we've been talking about this, putting a lot of information in house about how we can prepare for IRP and building. I feel like the permitting process takes many, many years and it's not so easy just to like build a new resource. So how do we make this happen, I guess? Turn it over to Eliza, who has a real nice experience in that area to answer your question.
Yeah, I would say, you know, utilities are adding resources, but it's been kind of more of a slow and steady pace. So this is a big pace. And I think as we can tell, there are a lot of projects in the pipeline out there that look like they could be permitted. But the other thing is then we have to be able to get it to the load, to the higher speed transmission. So are we falling a little bit behind? Possibly. And nobody wants to say, look, no, don't load here. And so it's going to take a lot of work. There's been a lot of encouraging developments, but there's also things that can give you some pause as well. And so we have to all get creative and work together to find solutions. And whether it's more energy efficiency or more demand response. You know, what I'm going to show you with this app is, you know, those resources from the first five years are probably sort of, as that really picks up and those retire, that's more of a challenge. Utilities, some utilities are actually looking at the optionality that they have within the existing laws. They, do I have to retire it in 2026? Can I wait until 2030? So people are looking at what kind of headroom they need, looking at the laws and trying to think about how they're performing. Not surprisingly, the, the investment, you know, in these new resources is coming from those utilities that still have and, you know. But that said, there is growth happening. And so it is a region-wide need to make investments. And electrification and climate change will get, can, as utilities start recognizing those impacts on their load as well, have better information about the timing, that is going to also have the potential to increase load. So we're trying to get creative with our solutions. Eva recognized an opportunity to get creative with demand response, but you don't want to, you don't want to fatigue your customers either, because your job is to serve their load.
I've got two questions. Thank you very much for the presentation. One, the Amazon, Google, AI and everybody who sucked the life out of all the firm, cheap power, oh, hydropower in eastern Oregon and southern Washington. Why are we continuing or are you as an organization, you know, giving them tax incentives to build more and more of that, to take more of that power away when we have these type of predictions? Or are you doing anything to address that?
Over, I've got two questions.
Well, I've, no, I've got another question.
Okay.
Totally unrelated. So you can answer the first one if that one was, I have one.
Yeah. So our organization, not-for-profit Association of Utilities, and we are, we share this information, again, we, we don't provide any tax incentives, that's at the state level. We are an association and we're seeing the proliferation of data centers, not just in our region, but in other parts of the country. And I'll share, I'll let Eliza share some of her experience when she shared this with a broad audience across the West.
Right. And, you know, so the growth in data centers is happening, you know, I, I heard in Arizona, you know, they were experiencing, they're expecting a double load in the next decade. So that's even more than we're seeing here. I also heard, got a call from Northern Virginia Electric Co-op after I presented this forecast and they said, how are you forecasting data centers? We're expecting a huge amount of data center growth. We're already having trouble serving that load because we don't have enough transmission. But I guess I would say, you know, there, I don't think we're advocating for one kind of load over another kind of load. I don't think utilities are, there's, but, but these technologies also serve a great service to the, to, to humanity in some ways, because it does provide us the ability to stay connected and helps improve healthcare. I mean, we've just gone to a very digital world and that is about progress. So there are things that come from that that can be considered positive. And so, you know, there are different schools of thought, but, you know, I think that's a political, you know, maybe that's a political policy question with the state of Oregon and your representatives about the tax breaks of where power should be going. And it doesn't mean, there's also rate design that can influence who pays and how much they pay for the resources, which is outside the scope of the Northwest regional forecast. All we're trying to bring is the data and information about what is happening. And then it's for the utilities to work with their boards, to work with the policymakers to figure out how best to serve the load and what load they should serve.
And then real quick, so we are aggregating and making a big guess and you're aggregating and making a big guess. And so everybody's guessing and you're guessing about the guessing, so to speak. What are the chances of magnifying the margin for error in this? Because you're taking all the utilities' best guesses and you're making your best guesses. Isn't that compounded chance for you to have a bigger deficit than what you have?
A bigger deficit or maybe not as much, maybe we're over forecasting, right? So, or under forecasting. I think it's very hard. It's not an easy job to be a load forecaster. I think by consolidating and you're looking at trends over time, we see what's happening. And so, you know, forecast error, we saw a forecast error in the 60s and 70s and then, you know, drop off. And so I think that is another reason why we bring that kind of trend information to visibility, so we can talk about what do we know and what don't we know for sure? So we can think about those projections. So that is why that, looking back at our history, is very important. And that's why a forecast, like the Northwest regional forecast, that can go back and compare these trends over time is useful for that discussion.
I would add, you know, it's one of the reasons why Eliza and I were cautious about the information that we were receiving and why we embedded it with our utility members, again, through our board and through the system planning committee. So we take this very seriously. It's very hard to do, but we are pleased to share what we know.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
So you want to go first or?
Doug, either way.
Please go.
I have a few things. Thanks for the presentation and the report. This is really helpful and appreciate you for letting, letting up a team to help us think about these issues. I'm curious, my understanding of the Federal Inflation Reduction Act incentives is that they're a little harder to model because in some of them there are, there's no cap, right? There's, they're, they're not limited by tax burdens or direct payments. And so without diving into weeds on those incentives, my question really is, how are you managing Inflation Reduction Act incentives within your forecast?
Well, the reason why I mentioned it is to be really clear that none of it was showing up in this year's forecast. And so we expect that as utilities learn more about these opportunities, as states set up programs to tap that federal funding, that they will be able to include that in their plans. And when Eliza and I share a request for information, we might see some of that coming back to us. And that may happen with next year's forecast. And it, it will see more with the forecast after. So we're lagging and we expect to see more of it. But wanted to be really clear that that doesn't show up in this year's.
Thanks. That's super helpful. So the, the projections add to 2030 or something?
Ten-year study, but we gather that information at the end of the year.
Okay. That's really helpful. Thank you. Another question, you showed deficits both in peak and average generation. I'm curious, from your professional perspective, are you more concerned about our ability to meet the peak demands or more concerned about the deficit and average?
I think it's an indication that we're in this clean energy transition. So we need energy as we shut down coal plant, we need other energy. The deficits are bigger in peak, we need both. And I think it's a trend that's worth tracking on the energy side. So, you know, we usually filled in energy deficits by relying on other regions' surplus or increasing our, the gas generation because when you're looking at an annual energy basis. But especially when low waters happen. So when water is not low, we're going to have not quite as big of a deficit. But we do rely on these other sources and so we need to think about how they're, how that's going to change our need for resources. So that's just, you know, it's something to watch. It's not a primary concern to me.
That's helpful. Thanks. And then last question. You're working regionally on, on behalf of smaller, I don't know if it's necessarily small utilities, but publicly and privately owned utilities. What does your interface look like by, with BPA? And if you're sharing this with them, what do they say?
Yeah, thank you for that question. And it was in my notes, but I went right over it. We collect information from utility members and the Bonneville Power Administration. So we get about over 130 utilities' information in this forecast. And the Bonneville Power Administration is not a member of our organization, but they are on our board in a non-voting ex officio way. So you really can't do anything in this region without BPA's perspective and input on solutions. So we do capture most of the utilities in, in the region.
Yeah. And I think the following question is, I assume then with these projected deficits that BPA is similarly concerned. And I'm curious what the reaction or steps being projected on behalf of BPA right to the thousand pound really in this conversation?
So real world example, Eliza and I are working with the long-term planners at BPA to share information, to compare notes, to talk about the purpose of our forecasts and how they get to load forecasting. Our organization also offers a forecasting workshop to those people in the utilities who are working hard to solve these challenges. We, we invite BPA and we help people get a presentation from BPA at that forecast, at that load forecasting workshop about their upcoming resource program and what they're predicting.
Thanks.
Okay, I'll try to be quick because I know we're over, over time here. A few quick takeaways. One, it seemed like the, the amount of renewable energy that we need to collectively input is well over the 12,000, I think you said 30,000 roughly megawatts?
It's roughly 30,000 to meet that level of deficit of resource, of nameplate capacity.
Okay. So it takes how long to implement? I mean, I know we have some in the pipeline. It doesn't sound like, you know, there's some may be permitted, some may not, but even with that, we're only 17 planned right now. The deficit is coming in a few years. So do we even have an ability to, to get, to, to prevent this? Or are we just saying, you know, three to five years, we're just going to be in a major shortage? Sorry, I'm good. I, I just want to be clear on kind of where we're at.
Yeah. On the numbers, I'll, I'll turn to Eliza, but really on the general message, you know, we, we saw some really big changes between this year and last year, but we certainly don't want to be alarmist about it because what we to be alarmist about it because what we also saw is that utilities are planning for this. And it is a 10-year study. So we're looking out 10 years, trying to predict the future in 10 years. And we see utilities stepping up the resources, and we expect to see more of those come online. We expect to see, you know, some of the permitting challenges resolved through increased coordination. And so we don't want to sound an alarm. We definitely want to demonstrate that utilities are committed to this. Deficits are a way of tracking, and really we want to make sure that you know that utilities are working on this together across the region, at least on the numbers.
Yeah, and I guess deficits aren't a bright line that there's going to be an event. There are a lot of tools that utilities have, but they are increasing, and it does need a lot of resources. And so it is, you know, I would say it's not, we're trying to strike that balance, right? There may not be enough, and so there are other tools potentially, you know, run the gas more, delay some of the coal retirements, you know. But we don't know specifically what's going to happen, but I think utilities are going to be making those choices. Do I shut down something or wait a little longer? And, you know, transmission to other regions can help. There are surpluses, diversity in the mix and loads, and so tools like demand response, more energy efficiency may, that may increase as well in what utilities want to do. So I think it's just important to keep in mind, there's a lot of tools that utilities have, but, you know, high prices may be something that we have, but more volatility in prices is something that we may have to get used to, and I think that's an important thing for a utility to be considering, is how do they fit within this regional picture? We wish we had that crystal ball.
Especially if you have your.
Right. It's amazing. To have her with us. I have crystal ball, but it's still not helping us. It's still hard. Still can't predict the future like we would like.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, it's just, when I sit here as commissioner and I think about, okay, we have this major regional deficit, we're doing our own work to do the IRP to figure out what portion of that is. But then I also think about, we have the Carmen Smith that took a decade or more to, I mean, 15 years just to license, and now we're doing the construction process. I mean, it's 20 years before we get this small amount that isn't even a fraction of what you're saying is a deficit. So when I, when I take this in, I go, okay, now what do I do with it? So maybe Frank can answer that for me.
Well, I was going to give Commissioner Borowski a chance, and I'd like to make a couple of comments at the end, just to provide a little bit of context around why we think this is important.
Okay. And I have one other question then.
That's fine.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay. My other quick question, I heard you talk quite a bit about data centers eating up a lot of energy, which I would have expected it would have been more on the EVs and the transition to the electrical economy. But, I mean, how much data does a document take up if we store it indefinitely? I mean, should we be thinking about a giant data purge instead of, you know, me storing 7,000 photos of cats every year? Is that even, even something that should be considered? Is it really more on the EV side or much bigger players in the data side?
You know, I can't speak to the details behind what part of the data center load is causing that, but I suspect it has more to do with computing, right? And, but I can't, I can't say, you know, I think those are good questions that the industry should understand, but not, but we can't get into that level of detail.
Okay. Commissioner Borowski?
Thank you. And thank you for the, the report. It was fascinating to go through and read. I guess I'm going to piggyback on the increased load in industrial with the data centers. Do you have any idea from the people who are reporting that they're going to be seeing that increased load from the data centers that is because of our region's majority clean energy? You know, when you look at companies like AWS and Google, in their strategic plan is to be carbon neutral. And so are they citing these data centers in areas of the country that have a high percentage of carbon neutral or, or clean energy? And is that why we're seeing this spike in the Northwest? Because our, our pie is 50% clean, and they can put that towards their climate goals? That's my first question.
I guess I would say that it, and I'm speculating a little bit, that it can be part of the picture, but we also, they're growing in Northern Virginia, and they have their gas make up a large portion of their energy supply. We know Arizona, they are trying to become a cleaner area. So I think there's this, this load that has to be close to where people are. Also, we have heard that it needs to where they have other data centers, another infrastructure. And so, so it's a combination of factors. Really, it's an industry that we're all still trying to understand how to forecast, and they're competitive with one another, and so it's very challenging. And that's a challenge for the utilities.
The second thing that, from your presentation, that I really took away that was, was enlightening was you referred to all of the power sources as fuel. So water is fuel, sunlight is fuel, natural gas is fuel, water is fuel. But, you know, a lot of times people don't think of it in that term, that, you know, oh, we've got a low water year, our gas tank is half full. It's a fuel. So that was enlightening to hear you guys think of the resources in that direction. And then my last question is, on the, on the peak deficit, when you're looking at that, part of the industry strategy going forward is storage. And we know that storage has a limited amount of time, you know? The batteries we're looking at right now are four-hour things. Are those peaks, four-hour peaks, or are those two-day peaks that we're looking at the deficit of? And is that reasonable to think that storage is a viable option for hitting our peak deficits?
So you hit on something. This is a one-hour peak deficit. We're not, you know, so this is our, kind of our forecast and our trend, and that's something why we are working with the Bonneville Power Administration, because they do a sustained peak look at what is needed. And so those comparisons, but we're really trying to see, are they seeing the same trends that we're seeing? And so we're eager to see their forecast and be able to talk through those comparisons with the region as well.
Great. Thank you very much.
Great.
Yeah, well, first of all, I wanted to thank Crystal and Eliza for not just coming to share this, but going through all the aggregation and distilling it down to a level that you can draw some conclusions from. So, so thank you, and thank you for sharing it. Part of the reason we wanted to do this with the board was to give you a little bit of context around the environment of which we are planning around, and to recognize that we operate within an interconnected system. And so while we have our own IRP, as you've learned, there's 200 other IRPs going on simultaneously. And what it's going to create is an environment that's really going to be pretty turbulent for a while. When you start to look at markets or conditions that create scarcity, what happens is you start to see excursions, you start to see pricing excursions, which we've, which we've already seen in the market. Some of those are driven by market panic, some of them are driven by physics, some of are driven by Mother Nature and conditions. For us, I think it's really important that our IRP teams and our planning teams recognize the fact that if you start to look at the characteristics of which we're planning in, we can't just look at a resource under its ideal conditions. This board recently passed a resiliency policy. Part of that policy is to look at decisions that we're making in the unknown, in the worst, in the non-normal conditions, which might mean it drives us toward decisions that, while on, in one profile, one average profile might not be the best decision, but it might create the most flexibility. If you're dealing with a, with a marketplace and conditions that are turbulent, you want to create flexibility in the decisions that you're making. Because what happens is it also drives supply chain issues. You know, you talked about the IRA. What's going to be really interesting is to look a few years down the road and see what it's done to the supply chain challenges that we, that we have. And so there's, there's just a lot here. Wanted to give you a little context. I don't think there's anything to panic about. However, in our planning, we really need to develop flexibility, we need to develop options, and we need to go into this with our, with our eyes wide open, knowing that there's a lot of different things that we're trying to plan around. So I appreciate the, the opportunity to weigh in, and really appreciate Eliza and sharing. So, and this will continue. They're, they're just done with this one, and they're going to get started on the next one here pretty soon, just like our, our IRP.
More change.
Yeah, look for the trends. We'll tell you what we see.
And the other thing that I think is going to be interesting is, and I think the question touched on it, there's a big difference between planning for something and doing it. And, and we see a lot of barriers around permitting and other things that, you know, it's great, you put it on a piece of paper, it's easy to put it on a piece of paper, you then have to actually go make it happen. And it did take 15 years to re-license a hydro facility that already existed. Transmission is going to be a really critical piece to interconnecting all these different loads and resources that are both becoming more dynamic. So there's a lot of work to do, and it's great, and it's exciting to be a part of it, I guess. So we'll see what happens next.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Well, we're a little bit behind. Catch up a little bit. We will go on to Resolution Number 2316, adopting new E-Web PURPA manual in process. Thank you for visiting. Okay. All right. Well, take it away.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners. Now that we just got through talking about the favorite subjects, load forecasting and running planning, we'll move on to my second favorite subject, Public Utilities Regulatory Policies Act. So PURPA, as it is otherwise known, has played a powerful role in the energy landscape since it was first passed in 1978. PURPA was designed to promote energy conservation, clean local resources, and of course, fair rates. Tonight, we have a real treat, doubleheader on PURPA, where we will first be talking about the existing manual, which has become somewhat obsolete since it was first put together in 1979. And we'll be sharing insights on how the staff proposes to streamline and monitor the processes in that manual. Our objective, we want to balance comprehensive public input, a cornerstone of what we do here at E-Web, with practicality. Public engagement is essential to our success, however the existing manual's complexities are really just no longer aligned with today's reality. So joining me up here at the table, from your right, we have Jonathan Hart, our new appointed supervisor, and Aaron Bush. Megan Capper was unable to join us this evening. If you have any easy questions, I'm happy to help with those, but please, we write the hard ones to Aaron. So with that, we'll hand it off.
Okay. Thank you. I will try and speak up. I am often very quiet. Every time I speak, I will say the same disclaimer, so just stare at me if I'm not loud enough. Brian just mentioned some of the background here. We just want to highlight, two agenda items, one on the process, one on new standards. And having those new standards come out is kind of what's creating the incentive to reevaluate the process. So just first off, this is about the hearings process in the existing manual and putting a new process in place. So Brian alluded to some of this, a tiny bit of background on PURPA. So again, the Public Utilities Regulatory Policies Act passed in the late 70s in response to the energy crisis. And so in that context, right, they're really focused on using resources efficiently. We need some context with what Crystal and I was just talking about. Right, efficient use of facilities, conservation of energy, kind of, it's a well-inactioned statute intended to kind of incentivize these things. PURPA had a few different parts, but one of the parts was a set of standards for utilities to consider, and so that's what we're talking about tonight, is standards that are included with PURPA. And most recently, the 2021 Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act created new electric vehicle and demand response standards. So it's those two standards that are from this recent conversation that we're. So the big context for E-Web is how do those PURPA standards apply? We are a non-regulated utility, so that's distinguishing us from folks like Portland General, right? That's an investor-owned utility. They are overseen by the Oregon Public Utilities Commission. And so in that context, the Oregon Public Utilities Commission is the one who looks at the PURPA standards and develops rules and things around that, which he has to comply with that. So because they're an investor-owned utility, there's kind of this different treatment for E-Web as a locally governed utility. So PURPA kind of recognizes that context and says, hey, you're locally governed, we're going to give you autonomy to let the board and the local community decide what's right for you. So we have a lot of authority to determine the process that's right for us, as well as our standards. The one thing we have to do is conduct that whole process, make a decision. So we have to, we have to think about the standards and show our consideration of them. So Brian alluded to that existing manual. I don't even care to look at it. I have read it. It was one of those things where we looked at, it's like, how on earth are we going to apply this thing? And that was part of the discussions, like, what reasonable process? Actually, the last time standards were passed in 2005, was the last PURPA standards, the staff said, hey, maybe we should do a simpler process or more, we should process, we didn't get around to it. So here we are today, saying, hey, let's do it this time. So basically, it's really complex. There's a lot of legal language, and it has unnecessary requirements that aren't required by PURPA. Really, the changes in the energy industry, in the energy spectrum, we interact with our customers is changing, and so that's really not necessary for us. So, you know, what's actually in PURPA that we have to consider? Like, what is this? This is pretty much verbatim from the actual, really simple, vague language, right? We have to have a public notice and hearing, we have to make a decision in writing, it has to be based on evidence, and it has to be available to the public. With that, we've got broad authority to determine what works for us. So basically, we're suggesting kind of a more efficient process, 35-day public comment, primarily relying on written comments. Right, we have a website that we can send, we did that with IRP, we get a lot of written comments today, but also having an in-person session for folks who want to show up. Those comments are going to inform kind of our consideration and determination, so whether we choose to adopt a standard. And then we would use this new process for considering the new standards. So that was a really quick review of the broader background process that knows something that comes up often. Certainly, right, the last time was 2005, 2006. New to me, it was a big, big thing to look at that manual and try and figure out, like, how is this applied elsewhere? And so, yeah, we are basically asking, like, hey, included materials in the board packet for that process, however it's not, it's all kind of sitting there. I don't know if you have questions, but basically, we're recommending a motion to repeal the existing manual and implement the new corporate hearings process.
Good question. So you said earlier that we have to have a public hearing. So we're changing on the manual, but then in order to change it, then we would have another meeting in 35 days?
The requirements, so we don't, the requirements are for consideration of the standards, not for the actual process. So for us, it's up to us, like... So for us, it's up to us, like, determining what the appropriate process for us. That was literally an E-Web thing. It wasn't like, hey, PURPA said, you have to spend this many times and this much public input to apply on the process. They just literally said, have a process. So we don't have to... Those requirements are for the standards, but not for the process. So we kind of have a separate piece.
You can change the project first.
Just by E-Web's policies, our own internal reservation process. We don't have to.
And then to change the standards, then that will follow the process that we adopt. Okay. Any other questions, Mindy?
It just seems like this, the process that you're recommending is similar to our rate hearings, right? It's the same thing, so it would just bring consistency across the orders.
That's the goal, which is to keep it... We're trying to make it kind of more efficient and effective, align it across. We've got this happy thing that was well-intended. And at the time, right, we would have passed it in the manual, the existing manual in 1979. Like, PURPA was a deal. It was kind of landmark legislation in that context. And a lot of folks acted accordingly. Kind of did this big, like, I don't know if you read the memo, but like, there's like 700 pages of documents that came out of this thing. It's not in our benefit, it's not in our customers' benefit to go through that. We want something that's more effective.
You mentioned that investor-owned utilities are regulated by the PUC to do something similar. So are they going through a similar process at this point for IOUs?
The Utilities Commission is the one who decides what standards IOUs have to hit. So the Utilities Commission will look at PURPA and say, hey, we want to adopt these standards. Let's throw a rulemaking around it. We're going to apply that to other IOUs. And so they actually decide for those utilities, like, you're going to adopt the standard, and here's how you're going to do it. We have the autonomy to decide.
I assume they're triggered by the same new standards for EVs and DR?
Yeah, so the PUC would look at the same PURPA documentation.
Yeah, I guess that's my question. I assume they're doing something parallel for the IOUs as we're doing this. And then my last question, how is this your second favorite topic?
Well, for the generalist present in the room, I will say that sarcasm translates poorly into print. I do have quite a bit of experience working with PURPA on the rate side, though. One of the most used sections of it is avoiding cost rate making for local resources. This is something that we would do anyway, regardless of whether PURPA requires it for direct generation rate, for example, or directly connected solar. That is an example of an avoid big cost rate that PURPA would drive. So if a customer came in and said, hey, if you want an avoid a cost rate, we could say, great, we've already got one.
Okay, any other questions? John Barofsky, do you have anything? I don't see your hand raised, so, okay.
I'm going to move to approve Resolution 2316, repealing the 1979 procedural manual for hearings under the National Energy Act and adopting the hearing process.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 As unanimously. Thank you. I guess we'll move to the second bullet.
Yeah, double feature here. So Brian is... Okay, so now we're going to talk a little bit more about the actual standards. Kind of, you're going to hear a little bit of this redundant, hopefully. I know it's fun to hear PURPA, Public Utility Regulatory Policies Act, a whole bunch of times. But for this item, discuss a little bit more what consideration and determination means. Like, what is the analysis, how are we making a decision? A little bit more on the standards themselves. A little bit program and policies. And then that time, kind of like, what does the process is going to put in? We've talked about this non-regulated utility. We have, right, so both on the process, but also whether to adopt a standard. We have a lot of local autonomy. And so we get to decide what is appropriate for us. I want to call attention to this last bullet because I do think it's important, snapshot in time. So there have been 21 PURPA standards passed since it was initially enacted in 1978. The last update, right, was in 2005. We had this update in 21. You don't have to go back and look at all these new standards or hold them all the time. You make a determination on whether you adopt the standard in reflection of the utility's circumstances and strategic direction at that time. We have changed our policies. We have changed our rate design. Since we have adopted or not adopted certain standards back in the day, we're going to revisit them. So we're making a determination now on these standards. Considering it for the utility at this moment, it's not locking us into a forever, this is the thing we shall do, and if you ever change, you got to go back and find all the old ones. So I want to be clear about that. This is a reflection of where we're at. You don't have to think about it in terms of forever. Part of that PURPA will talk more about this is the process and really just the consideration piece for us. So diving in on that determination consideration. So these are, I keep saying them because they're language, it's language in the statute. Determination is basically like the decision of whether to adopt a standard. So determining, is the standard appropriate for E-Web? And we're determining if the standard aligns with PURPA's purposes, which we've mentioned several times. They're broadly in that kind of efficiency conservation, efficient use of resources. So determination is kind of like, is it appropriate? And should we, are we adopting it? And consideration is broadly the analysis and input and information that we're using to make that decision. So those are kind of the two pieces in the statute. Again, I do want to stress that this shouldn't feel like it's coming out of left field as we talk about these. We've got the IRP set up here to talk about it. We've got broad strategic direction around demand response, around electric vehicles electrification. So the analysis and information should reflect kind of what we're doing. And so all of that will kind of fold in how we're thinking about it. Not to be getting anything this month. This is really just background, but we're going to start to get into it. Just a little background on those standards and kind of where E-Web is at. So demand response, the standard basically says that utilities should promote demand response and kind of says, hey, you can enact rates to cost recovery for that. And then for E-Web, you know, where are we at? We don't have any current demand response programs or time of use rates. That is due to a couple of things. We have done some test pilots, and some kind of analysis of that in the past that those... That more next time. We also don't currently have the measuring infrastructure or the software. So that's E-Web Enterprise Systems. So, right, demand response is something that is really looking at dynamic load fluctuations and having billing capabilities and rate making that come along with that. So you have to have metering infrastructure to see what the heck people's load is actually doing. You have to have the software on our end to match up with that and pair of rates and data with those things. And so we don't have either of those rolled out right now. They're kind of in process or soon to be in process. And time is looking 2025-ish for those. We also know that demand response is selected as a resource in IRP. Part of the action plan for the IRP is kind of part of the long-term strategic vision. So for demand response, we've got this juxtaposition of not currently doing it. We're missing a couple of key technology pieces to implement. But also, we're headed in that direction. For the electric vehicles, it's a charging standard, right? That's kind of how we interface with electrified things, is how do they charge? Energy. The goal of the standard is to promote transportation electrification. So all those subbullets on the left-hand side are the things that kind of PURPA thinks we can do to impact the effectiveness or influence people to electrify, right? So affordable rates, improved charging times, support investment in charging infrastructure. Again, a cost for utilities. So, right, that's stated, the goal is to promote electrification. On the right-hand side, kind of where are we at? We actually have a number of policies and programs and rebates around EV charging and other electrified transportation, right? So we've got rebates for residential, commercial customers. We've got some things for affordable housing, bicycle rebates, and then car share, right? So we're kind of approaching it from a few different angles. But we do have a broad swath of programs and incentives in that. A lot of the funding for that, just for context, comes from the Oregon Clean Fuel Program. That is where we get... I just might swear the word that I'm looking for. It is credits. Thank you. We get credits when customers charge with our low-carbon electric supply. And we market those credits and use all that revenue. So we're already doing a lot of things that kind of broadly are aligned with this statement. So in the big picture, right, the new standards appear to broadly align with our strategic direction. Do you want to point out the second bullet kind of on the process side? For us, as a non-regulated, locally-controlled utility, a lot of the goal of PURPA is to have us thoughtfully consider the standards and interact and engage with our customers and community about what we should do. So that process piece is really as big and hopefully as important as the actual decision. And just to highlight again, locally governed. Dive into kind of timeline, we've got three broad swim lanes here. Board, staff, that's us, and public comment. So September 5th is tonight, passing the resolution on the new process, which we'll use. The staff, we're giving a little bit of background, right, about these new standards, just a little bit about kind of what they are and where E-Web is at. On Friday, we are going to post a public notice and kind of open up a page on the website around the PURPA standards, solicit public comment. So that comment will be open for 35 days. We'll have some time at the next board meeting in case people want to come in and use anything in person. And then also, next month, we'll come back, either in person or provide materials and give more analysis of like, where is the overall, what is the broad picture for us? And really provide some initial leanings on what we're thinking about, as well as if there's public comment by that time, kind of a brief summary of that. So you kind of have a sense of where things are moving. And then by November, we would have a clear recommendation on to adopt the standards, incorporate the comment, and all of their analysis. So the goal is to add that resolution in the value of what we're doing. And we would hope that, right, it's reflective of our strategic direction. All those good things. We're trying not to catch the board by surprise. We want to kind of... Questions? Anything, it's EV and ER, and if there are questions, we'll get more information.
So when Smud was here last month and gave a presentation on some of our electrification things, they mentioned about putting in EV charges in local income housing projects. And I questioned the wisdom of that because EVs are expensive in utilization rates, and they had no data on that. So hopefully, are you going to look into that? Because I think you can get some good data from places like Amazon Crossing and other new market rate places that has charging and their utilization rates and the cost. And also, you look at the VA clinic, probably the best healthcare in the world. I think they put 30 in, and I don't think one's been used in five years.
I would say the goal is to incorporate things like that. I know that in talking internally, and trying to wait until next month to really dive into things, but E-Web does, right, some of the bicycle infrastructure, the car share, they're really different things that are explicit under PURPA. And I do think we kind of like have been talking internally about what does this equitable rates mean? What does access mean? So we have some things that differ explicitly what PURPA has put in here. So that definitely will be part of our consideration. Thank you.
One quick question about our public notice. I assume, do we do public notice again in the RG or other qualifications? Or is it just on our website?
The plan right now, I believe, I'm going to look at Aaron O., is the registered guard. We could also do it in other places, but that's the current plan.
Great, thank you. And then my understanding, John, is that the IRA has incentives for used EVs as well? And the prices will come down and become more commonly used. Thanks.
As long as you can actually put batteries in them.
We can actually have places to park them and lanes to drive them.
Yeah, do that. All right. Okay, so you have what you need for now.
That was information only, so we will be back with more the next couple of months.
Thank you. Okay, and while we're switching, my computer is running to restart. There's no option to postpone. Turn it back on, I'm sorry, John. Jason, legislative update.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good evening, everyone. I'm Jason Huser, the Public Policy and Government Affairs Director here at Eugene Water Electric Board. I'm here this evening to give you a snapshot of public policy and are supposed to be legislative and policy matters at the state level here in Oregon. You may recall from either my reports, dispatches from Salem or from the news, it was a fairly bruising state legislative session that involved the longest legislative walkout in state history. So after a pretty tense atmosphere at the Capitol in the final days, it's no surprise, it's been very quiet since. I think the legislators just needed a break to decompress. But summer vacation is ending, the kids are back in school, and state agencies are taking up the pen to look at their rulemaking schedule. The legislature legislates and state agencies implement. Not unusual for a bill in Salem that might be as short as five pages to produce 50 pages or more of administrative rules. So a lot of activity expected here in the fall. And on my next slide, I'll highlight a few of the key rulemakings that I expect will be keeping me and our subject matter experts here at E-Web busy this fall. Number one, notably, the home energy programs and one shop portal that were included in the omnibus climate package passed in the final days of the session. This creates two programs that anticipate a $100 million-plus infusion of federal funds from the Inflation Reduction Act. Oregon will be authorizing two programs to receive those federal funds. One program is a home electrification incentive program. It's à la carte. The second program is a whole-home energy efficiency rebate program. It's expected to, it's required that those rebates would increase the, excuse me, decrease the energy consumption in a residence by 20%. And that's very exciting. It's going to be great that E-Web customers will be able to avail themselves to these programs. Our interest in it is to be at the table to ensure state programs are complementary of utility programs. We'd like to see bidirectional information sharing to effectuate that. That also will be really important for two things. We need to ensure no irrational outcomes happen, such as a person receiving multiple incentives that total greater than 100% of the cost of installing a measure. It's also very important for us to ensure that all of the energy savings accomplished through the state program are properly recorded and measured for the purposes of evaluating compliance or reaching the energy efficiency targets in the Northwest Power Plan. That's important to us as well. We have some great staff at E-Web that have great acumen. And I believe, actually, this Thursday, we have an internal meeting of E-Web staff to prepare for the listening sessions that ODO will be conducting next month. So we're getting our plan together to communicate to ODO, hopefully, what's constructive input as they design that program. This also, these home energy programs also involve the creation of a one-stop-shop portal, as they're calling it. It's kind of modeled after something the Electric Vehicle Trade Association Fourth did a few years ago. They created some kind of portal where you enter in your address, and the portal populates information about all the EV incentives for purchase of an EV or other equipment that you could avail yourself to. So it's the same idea. I understand there's been community interest in a local portal. I think that was communicated in the letter that Commissioner McCray... I think that was communicated in the letter that Commissioner McPhee was discussing. I would think that it's very likely a statewide portal could supplant the need for a local portal. We'll take a look and see how that turns out. I'm thinking the state may have insights and information that would make that portal even more universal. So, exciting stuff. Moving along, the Building Performance Standard that was enacted in the Omnivist Climate Bill, that would direct the Oregon Department of Energy to inventory commercial buildings around the state of Oregon, benchmark their energy use, and come up with energy performance targets to make those buildings more efficient in the future. There's no direct role for EWEB. We have no direct compliance obligations under the program. But because many of our customers will, it's another rulemaking. We'll want to be at the table, possibly sharing our own experiences with commercial energy efficiency. And we want to be there also to support our customers. It's very possible that it can be also commercial buildings that are multifamily buildings or could be nonprofit. I think it's probably going to be something where we would want to suggest that any federal funds that Oregon hopefully can attract to help assist building owners. If that's a finite resource, we certainly would want to see multifamily and nonprofits prioritized in that process. Moving along, the Natural and Working Lands Incentive Fund was enacted in the Omnivist Climate Bill. That's very exciting to us. You may recall from previous correspondence, Governor Brown has enacted a cap and reduce program in the state of Oregon by executive order, Climate Protection Program. We were watching that closely to see if carbon sequestration would qualify as an offset, potentially be a way to help bring resources to support EWEB's carbon sequestration program that's already off and running. Unfortunately, due to a legal opinion from DOJ, the governor had to limit offsets only to regulated sectors under the Climate Protection Program. So that omitted natural working lands from that carbon sequestration. And it's great to see the legislature, though, basically incorporate a standalone program specifically tailored to these lands. They allocated $10 million to the program initially. That's not a lot of money, but it's very possible there are federal competitive pots of money. And having an existing state program, including a little bit of skin in the game at the state level, that could position Oregon to compete for federal money to populate that fund even further. So again, this is another topic that EWEB has good experience in. We're obviously interested not only in reducing carbon, or sequestering carbon, but the co-benefits to water quality from that sequestration. So we'll be bringing EWEB's subject matter experts to that rulemaking as well. The last item here, a state energy plan, that's not a rulemaking per se. ODO was though directed by the Omnivist Climate Bill to formulate a state energy plan. And it's a very robust stakeholder process that they're required to follow. I would not say that Oregon was previously bereft of energy planning at the state level. But it's fair to say, we've never had a single home that was all written down in one place in this kind of robust stakeholder process. I don't think it would shock you if I told you, it's likely it will not be a consensus document. There's too many stakeholders and too many viewpoints and too many interests for that to be likely. We've already seen that in the formulation of Washington's state energy plan. I think one recommendation we might make is for ODO to strive to properly inventory the trade-offs of all the recommendations they make. It's possible that some stakeholders who may not agree with a recommendation may feel like they were listened to and their input was considered in the document. The recommendations do discuss the trade-offs of any recommendation in the state energy plan. There's one more item, actually, I'm sorry, it's not in my slides, a late-breaking item. I just also wanted to flag that Oregon enacted a paid leave act to previous legislative session. As that has reached the implementation phase at the state level, they did actually make some technical fixes in legislation this past legislative session. Kind of what I've been hearing from EWEB colleagues is that's been a mixed bag. Some of the technical fixes may not actually have fixed everything they intended to. It's created some unintended consequences. And EWEB, as an employer that I think has some pretty employee-friendly leave policies and benefits, probably aren't a good fit for this legislation, which probably is more effective in places where there was a vacuum on this sort of thing. So if you'd like more information, I can try to follow up with you on that. But just wanted to flag that as an item that will continue to be worked on at the state level. So that's the rulemaking items. I wanted to give you a little bit of a look ahead and try to prognosticate on 2024 legislative issues. I had a great Crystal Ball joke teed up here, but she's here still, and she beat me through it twice tonight. I'm going to save that one for another day. It's okay, Crystal, it's your name, you can do what you want with it. I'll give more of a magic eight-ball prognostication than... It's hard to predict this far out, but two items that I think could be discussed in 2024, and neither of these will be a surprise, because Crystal actually talked about them in the Peacock presentation. You've heard about the influx of large electric loads, data centers, and crypto mining operations. There is a concern in the legislature about what clean energy procurement standards, or really the lack thereof, apply to some of these new loads when they are locating in parts of Oregon served by consumer-owned utilities that are not subject to the Clean Electricity Standard that was enacted in 2021. So there was an effort this past legislative session to tackle this issue. There was a bill, it was a little unorthodox, because the bill would have actually put clean energy procurement compliance obligations on the large load itself, rather than the load-serving utility. It was an unorthodox approach. It was well-intended, but did not go over well, and the bill was unsuccessful. I really do think, though, this issue is coming back. It may only be the subject of legislative hearings with like a work group that would work on this in 2024. It's hard to pass a bill in a short legislative session if it's contentious. So this could be more like an item that the legislature takes up in hearings and tasks a work group to work on and make recommendations to the 2025 session. And while I certainly think it's possible, things like the Clean Electricity Standard could be tailored to a broader scope and incorporate these loads. Commissioner Brown, I heard you mention tax policies. It's very possible there could be something that ties tax incentives for these loads to what kind of energy serves the load. That is fraught with peril, too. That's a little bit of an unorthodox approach as well, but can't rule it out. Moving ahead, organized markets and/or the formulation of a regional transmission organization. It's hard to succinctly describe this topic, but I'll try with a crude analogy. There was a time when people bought airline tickets by actually contacting individual airlines to find out what flights and prices were available. Nobody really does that anymore. We use things like Expedia and Kayak, where we can see all sorts of flights with different prices and times all at once. Again, it's a crude analogy, but there's something like that happening in wholesale electricity markets, a move away from bilateral transactions to an organized, centralized, optimized approach that uses the grid more efficiently. There's already an example of one existing development, we have a Western Energy and Balance Market. It's already been in practice for several years now. There's multiple proposals to expand that same type of direction, multiple permutations. They each check different boxes as far as the market functions, geographic footprints, and how far on an incremental spectrum to full centralization they go. I won't try to summarize them all. There's a great report we can make available to you if you're interested. The Oregon Department of Energy was asked to study an RTO and organized markets, value proposition, and make a report to the legislature. Our general manager, Frank Lawson, was actually on the advisory group and made some great contributions. It's a good report. I think it really does a good job of covering the trade-offs. It definitely suggests there is a value proposition that could benefit clean energy deployment, greenhouse gas reductions, and consumers. But it doesn't suggest that organized markets and RTO are a magic panacea to solve all the challenges for the electric sector. So it's a pretty balanced report. And I think I will close there and take any questions.
Phil Brodsky? Okay, I have one question. Based on the presentation that we had earlier, is there any work that we should be doing with legislators or other groups, government entities about permitting and how to speed that up? And if we are really looking at more the resource imbalance, do we need some government officials focusing on?
Well, first off, there was a work group that met last session to consider siting reforms. They did not come up with anything tangible that they turned into legislation. I wouldn't be surprised, though, for them to take another crack at it. There was some legislation passed last session that would make it a little bit easier to cite solar projects of a certain size at the county level instead of the Energy Facility Siting Council. But beyond that, I don't have anything off the top of my head I can tell you is a tangible proposal that's going forward. I think it's possible that may be something that the federal level might be tackling. There's certainly proposals in Congress. I think Senator Joe Manchin has a proposal to make siting easier. I don't have anything off the top of my head that I know Oregon is going to work on, especially in a short session, because there's competing values, right? You're going to certainly have to work with conservation groups, wildlife advocates. It's a tricky proposition, but you're absolutely right. I mean, something needs to give. We need a better process to get these things built. Just because we have the Inflation Reduction Act, the funds to do it, if there's too much red tape getting in the way, we're not going to be able to do this stuff fast enough. Frank, let's look at your
I'm just going to say, it is a more active discussion at the federal level. APPA and WPPA were involved in both of those organizations. And as you can imagine, each political party and each branch of Congress has introduced their version of permitting reform. Some targeted very specifically, some more general. It was part of the negotiation for the debt ceiling. That wasn't the right place to have it, but it got to that level. So I would expect something federally over the next year or two. And we'll, Jason, I'll work on how we can get our voice into that.
Okay. Sounds like we're done with that topic. Thank you very much, Jason.
Thank you, Jason. Thanks.
Okay. We're at 7:45. First minute presentation on College Hill construction and public outreach plans. I also, that I just want to check, because I know it's break after this one. Okay. College Hill.
President Carlson, commissioners, we're excited to be here tonight. I'm Karen Kelly, Chief Operations Officer. With me is Laura Farthing, our Senior Engineer and Project Manager for this project, and Jen Connors, our Communications Supervisor. And we're excited to talk about this very big, very impactful project of college hill replacement. I was just reading an article tonight during one of the presentations where some tribal folks were describing water, and they described it as, "Water is sacred, water is life." And I agree with that, and that's why I really think it's important that we're talking about this project tonight. Making sure I'm looking at the right thing on the screen. So I'm going to cover the project background and need. Laura will cover the project status update, and Jen's going to talk about the public participation plan. So as far as the project background and need goes, I want to remind folks of a few things. One is, the College Hill reservoir was constructed in 1939, so it is about 84 years old. And the concrete vendors, concrete tank vendors these days claim that the useful life of a concrete tank is 50 years. So we're quite a ways past that. So I wanted to remind folks of that. We first identified the need to replace base-level reservoirs with distributed storage through our 2015 master planning process. And in 2020, we really began talking about this project in earnest, both with the board and publicly. So what I want to talk about now is that the safe drinking water is paramount to the health of our customers and our economy. We are investing today for a resilient tomorrow because our base-level water storage is a critical part of our multiple-barrier approach to safe drinking water and our resilience mine. And you've heard me talk about that approach many times before, but I want to remind everyone that water storage is critical to having a secure water distribution network, and is one of the last steps in the process to ensure quality, reliability, and fire flow before the customers tap. It's important to understand that our base-level storage serves all of our customers, not just those in the proximity to the tanks. And for tonight, I want to discuss the issues that this project is aiming to address, one being resiliency and reliability. All of our base-level reservoirs have structural and seismic deficiencies. They are at or nearing the end of their useful life. For water quality, we must ensure that we meet modern standards for quality, which means better design elements to reduce water age and improve flow, as well as security from vandalism and other threats. Operationally, we need to allow to take one tank out of service while we keep the other in place to meet the needs of our customers and our community. And on the regulatory side of things, we must take College Hill out of service based on our agreement with the Oregon Health Authority by the end of this year, end of 2023. And constructing replacement storage is important to deal with the end of useful life at our Santa Clara reservoir. So the timing here is important. And figuring out just how and where and when we're going to deal with Santa Clara will be a future topic. And through all of that, I want to remind folks that we are looking at all possible funding opportunities, and the projects will be managed based on budget and work policy. So in the 10-year CIP, I did want to just mention, so you've heard many times now, we've talked about New Storage at East 40th. You're well aware of that project. Next project that we're focusing on tonight is College Hill. And then future projects, again, Santa Clara and Hawkins are hard to come. And with all of these projects, also includes transmission system upgrades. So one of the things that we hear regularly now, that we are talking about College Hill more and more, is why College Hill and why now? We have an agreement, as I mentioned, with the Oregon Health Authority to rehabilitate or decommission College Hill by the end of 2023 to address water quality concerns from the leaking roof joints. We have attempted to repair the roof joints, but the repairs do not last. So the existing reservoir cannot be retrofitted to meet current seismic standards. It can be improved, but it can't actually be retrofitted to meet those current standards, and that's a really important distinction. So for us to make additional short-term investments in a reservoir that's at the end of its useful life just doesn't make financial sense to us. The cost would be high, and then the tank still would be operating beyond its useful life. It still will be a work and climbing in age. So we need new tanks that meet modern standards and will last for another 80 years. So the benefits of demolishing and rebuilding include better water quality protection, earthquake resiliency and safety. And then again, the smaller tanks, having dual tanks at one time enhance the ease of So the next question we hear a lot is, why not drain the reservoir and keep the empty structure? And there's many reasons for that. First, I want to just stress again that this reservoir serves everyone, not just the neighboring properties, not just the surrounding community to the tanks, but the entire population of our service territory. We need to take advantage of gravity. You've heard this before when we were talking about East 40th, but the College Hill site is at elevation 607, which is really important to our pressure zones. It allows us to gravity feed from the storage to the customers, and that makes it things more efficient. We have limited opportunities in this community to take advantage of that, yet here we have a site that is already at that elevation and at that type of land use. a site that is already at that elevation and at that type of land use. So we think that is the best use of that space. We also have space constraints. We have to get two tanks into the site and need room for a third, and Laura's going to show you a little bit more about that. Leaving that tank would create a liability, and as Frank was mentioning with the Hoover Dam, it's another one that would be a stranded asset. It would no longer meet the needs of our mission, which is to provide safe, quality drinking water. And replacement, again, will enable us to take Santa Clara out of service and figure out a resolution to that, whether it be rebuilding it or building somewhere else to replace that. And Santa Clara really is within five years of its useful life, and that's based on some condition assessment that we have held done. So last but not least on this, I want to point out that we need to maintain our commitment to the rate pairs, and that commitment is in sustaining safe, reliable, affordable, and environmentally responsible drinking water. And in our last customer survey, that showed the customers believe the top priorities are reliability and affordability, and that was across the board, according to differences in age, income, and residential status, being that of both property owners and renters. So we believe that this project is meeting those ongoing missions. So just to close, as you know, I used to be EWEB's regulator. Drinking water quality is a top priority for me as an individual, but also for our entire water utility. So the picture on the right, you can see the roof joint of College Hill up close. It is, there's a big gap there. Anything that can get on the roof can get inside the tank. Inside the tank is finished drinking water, meaning it does not undergo additional treatment. So it's important that we resolve the structural problems of this reservoir and also the security problems of this reservoir with human access to the top. In the early or late 90s, early 2000s, there was a survey that showed 13% of all waterborne outbreaks come from deteriorating storage tanks. And while we have a chlorine residual in there, we have to overpower that and deplete the chlorine, not to mention that if something was introduced to that tank that couldn't be dealt with by chlorine, that would be in people's finished drinking water. So it is a very big concern to me. So the Safe Drinking Water Act standards require storage facilities to be secured and to deter vandal access. No other water storage site in Eugene permits public access. This is why it's so important to me personally and to our team that we fence these reservoirs and keep the public out. And the best part about this project is that we can do all of this and still maintain some recreational facilities and some shared space, because we know that is a value to our customers. So with that, I'm going to pass this over to hear the update on the project from Laura.
So for a status update, at East 40th, the tanks are substantially complete. Structure themselves are done. We're working currently on pipelining, pipeline installation in Patterson Streets connected into our existing transmission system. There's a second phase to the transmission that'll go all the way down to 34th and Hilliard, which will start up after the end of this phase. After we finish the pipelines, we still have some piping on-site to complete miscellaneous work there, but we're on track to streamline by the end of December 2023. We're also working on landscape design right now. There'll be a public process associated with that, and we'll start that work in 2024. So we put College Hill on hold while we were focusing on East 40th. So right now, we're in the preliminary design phase, which means we're looking at defining the criteria for the consultant to finish the detailed design. We're working on preliminary design items like tank siting. After that, we'll move into detailed design. Right now, the design contract is out to bid, so you'll see that come through on the consent calendar at the October board meeting. We're aiming to start construction in mid to late spring 2024. So the first phase of the construction will be demolition of the tank, and then we'll start on earthwork and tank construction. And then at the end, we'll work on landscaping and restoration. This is a team, the engineering and design criteria that we're taking into consideration. These tanks will be identical to East 40th. That allows us to have an efficient water system. They'll work really well together. The elevations will match East 40th. Like Karen said, they'll be at an elevation of 607. The whole community is going to get tired of hearing that number by the end of this. The bottom elevations will match as well, so that will allow water to flow in and out efficiently. We're also looking at the proximity to nearby residences. There's only houses on the north and the south side that are but the property. We're maintaining a 40-foot offset to the edge of the tanks that also aligns pretty closely with what's already been developed on the site. We're minimizing viewshed impacts to the neighbors. We're also looking at maximizing public space and public use at the end of the project outside of the tanks themselves. We're looking at how to minimize costs. We're ensuring that we have adequate access for maintenance and operation uses. We're taking into account the security requirements, so the fencing and where that's going to go. Looking at minimizing the excavation and looking at making the construction as efficient as possible, which will make the project less expensive, and we'll have it progress the schedule. And Karen also mentioned, we're also taking into account future replacement or improvement space. Future, past generations really had foresight in purchasing all the property at that elevation. So we want to make sure to give future generations some choices and some flexibility in what they can do. So the project scope, as I said, right now, we're in preliminary design. We're really right now focusing on tank placement. We included this figure for reference only, just to show the scale of what the tanks could look like on the site, to show kind of what we're considering for future use. We're working on final placement right now. We're anticipating that'll be complete in the coming weeks. We've completed all the geotechnical work. The survey is done. We're working right now to finalize the scope and the alignment for the required transmission improvement, so we can get water in and out of the tank. We're also starting to work on project rendering, so people can kind of visualize what the tank, the site will look like in the future. And we're starting to work with the state historical preservation office on the historic mitigation. So this has been determined to be a historically significant site, so there's a process we need to go through before we go into demolition. After we finish the preliminary design, detailed tank design and pipeline design will happen. We said we're going to begin for starting construction mid to late spring 2024, and then we'll move, after tank construction, we'll move into site restoration. And then the elevated green tank that's located next to this site, that will be removed as part of this project. We're just not sure on the timing or what's going to happen with that site yet. So what's next? As I said, in the coming weeks, we're going to finalize tank placement. The SHPO process requires us to have a memorandum of understanding. We're starting that process next week. We have our first public meeting on September 12 for that, and we're also meeting with the required agencies. As I said, you'll see the contract comes through on the consent calendar in October. We're on track to drain the tank by the end of 2023, and we'll leave the site open and the public will be able to use it as it is now until right before construction, and then we'll fence the extent of the sites. And then we'll start the public process, which Jen will talk about, to develop the landscape and recreation plan. Jen will go into our public participation plan next.
For the record, I'm Jen Connors. I'm EWEB's communications supervisor. I'm co-leading public communications for this project along with my colleague, communication specialist Claire Ray, who joined EWEB in July of this year and is in the virtual audience. Commissioners are familiar with neighbor and general public communication for the East 40th water storage project, and there are some similarities between that project and College Hill. For example, the importance of being clear and authentic with the public about opportunities for meaningful input. For College Hill, the areas where public can have the greatest impact on project outcomes are landscape design, public amenities, and historic mitigation. Our goal is to provide the community with multiple ways to engage on these project elements. In April, EWEB publicly announced the decision that College Hill would be the next reservoir to be replaced pending completion of new storage at East 40th. The announcement was made on our website, via our email interest list, social media, and was covered by several local news outlets. We kicked off our public outreach last month with an ice cream social at the reservoir. This was an informal meet and greet where we introduced team members and answered questions. It was a well-attended event, and we received about 21 comment cards with ideas about how the site could be used in the future. As Laura said, next week, we will hold a historic mitigation workshop to describe the process and collect ideas from the public for how to appropriately commemorate and memorialize the structure and its importance to the Eugene community. Next year, once the tanks are sited, we will shift focus to the landscaping plan, utilizing public events, surveys, and other tools to inform and engage neighbors, site users, and the public at large. And once the project approaches construction, we will keep surrounding neighbors informed every step of the way. Similar to the East 40th project, construction will be impactful to the neighborhood. It will create noise, dust, and other disruptions. And while we can't eliminate those impacts, EWEB is committed to being a good neighbor during construction by completing the project as quickly and efficiently as possible and maintaining open communication to ensure neighbors are updated regularly on what's happening and when work is being done. We're taking the recording and tracking of College Hill comments very seriously. We've heard from community members that they want to know if their feedback is heard and how it is used, or if that feedback is not acted upon, why not? To that end, all input is being put into a tracking sheet and is tagged with a subject to allow comments to be sorted and mobilized when needed. Not surprisingly, people who have enjoyed the top of the existing reservoir for recreation are deeply interested in continuing activities such as bike riding, roller skating, stargazing, and tai chi. And we expect this as a message commissioners will hear often in the coming months. The project team is reiterating a clear and consistent message that while the new tanks will not be open for public use, EWEB is committed to a public input process for landscape restoration, screening of the new tanks, and low-impact recreation facilities that can be enjoyed by everyone, while aligning with broader community values such as responsible use of funds, public safety, and ease of maintenance. Moving forward, we are going to expand our outreach to traditionally underrepresented groups to make sure diverse voices are heard on this project, which impacts all rate pairs. As we expand outreach, our goal is to provide multiple channels for engagement and try to break down barriers to participation. Our email list has more than 330 contacts and growing. Soon, we will utilize direct mail to deliver information about the project to all neighbors within a one-mile radius of the site and invite them to join the email list. We'll continue to utilize our website as a one-stop shop for project information. We'll plan and attend community events, and of course, make ourselves available to site neighbors and other interested members of the public for Q and A and general project info.
So as we said at the beginning, very big project, very impactful, very, very important to the entire community. So our goal tonight was to give you some updates and see what questions you've got for us, if there is something more we can do to prepare you. We do believe there will be a lot of interest by the community in this project and that you'll get a number of folks reaching out to you over the many years of construction as similar to East 40th, only, you know, we have folks who've used this facility, have wonderful memories, people have been married up there, you've heard all the stories. So the historic mitigation piece of this is going to be hard, and we take it very seriously. But it's time to get some new structures there and so that water utility folks can sleep at night. So with that, I'm going to ask for questions.
Thank you for that presentation, and you are all very seasoned at this by now. So my two questions. One is, what have you learned from the East 40th that you're doing differently with time?
I can start with that. So many lessons, so many. But I'll just pick one off the top of my head. From a public outreach perspective, you know, at East 40th, we were very focused on the adjacent neighbors for the first half of that project leading up to tree removal. And we learned that there was a broader neighborhood and community interest beyond just the adjacent residents to the site. And so for College Hill, as I said, we are expanding our outreach much earlier in the process.
And my other question is about, well, I know that we're going to hear a lot about what's going to happen to that space, and it's really hard for people when they feel like something's being taken away from them. And I also hear you saying that there's going to be opportunity for public input with landscaping and things like that. I just want to make sure that people hear correctly what it is you're saying, that when they hear that there's opportunity for input in landscaping, it doesn't mean landscaping of a flat surface that everyone's going to have access to. And I'm just wondering, do you, are there any preliminary drawings that you've shown people, or just so that people have an idea of what to expect?
We have not shown anybody any preliminary drawings because we're not that far in the process yet. We basically right now are just kind of been focused on figuring out what the primary uses are. We all live, Jen and I both live very close to that facility, and so we know that it's a really important part of the community that people have strong ties to. So I think that really paying attention to what it is that draws them to the site and trying to make sure that there's some sort of feeling associated with it, but as far as specifics, we have not, we're not there yet.
So thank you. As we progress with DEI, I'm glad to see this is the first example of a project by saying DEI Incorporated. So can you give me an example, because I'm learning about what an under-served community would be in your outreach?
Yeah, I think this was also outlined in your packet, so I'll, but I will try to remember a few of the groups that are on our outreach list. So that would include Eugene Adaptive Services for persons with disabilities, persons of color, young people, our Spanish-speaking community. We've identified organizations that are active in the community and have broad membership in some various, those various organizations that we're going to be inviting to the process and asking to join the email list and engage with us as much as they want to and are able to.
Thank you very much. Well, one quick one. Blasting, are we, I know that that's the B word, but has it been determined, did the engineers decide to, of course, have to have to blast them assault?
With that, has that been decided yet? We don't have an engineer on board yet, but likely, the excavation is significantly less than at East 40th, since the site's already been previously disturbed throughout its extents, but it will be an option that we will consider. Speaking of lessons learned from the past, we did learn lessons on excavation and things to watch for, so, but it will be, likely be an option that we will allow to be explored.
Thanks. I guess I just can, I appreciate our organizational commitment to clean water and that kind of ability. So, I think our community is 100%, I think that's the motivation for this end. So I think even though it's going to be difficult, especially those right next to the facility, I think we see community support broadly. Also, we're able to see the commitment to seismic performance, making these upgrades, including at Hayden Bridge and then, and then here, as well as the 40th. I just think we're in such a better spot than we were 10 years ago. So appreciate the organizational commitment to that. You mentioned one thing about that this facility can't be upgraded, can't meet today's seismic standard, couldn't be retrofitted. And I think we did a study in 2015 or something to that effect, right? I asked somebody, could we do that? And I just think, my guess is that there will be a bunch of people who will be asking this question, why can't we retrofit? And I think to the extent that we can point to an engineering study or analysis that says it just can't be done, or if we could, it would be astronomical, I would guess it's probably the former, but I think just being really clear about that will be helpful because I think that question will come up repeatedly. I appreciate the commitment to the historic mitigation. I know you have a workshop slated for the 12th of September. I'm inviting people already to start thinking about that. Super interested to see what comes through that process, and look forward to seeing what kind of creative solutions our team can come kind of creative solutions our team can come up with to, you know, take some of the pieces of the existing structure and reuse them, or what have you to, you know, prioritize that facility to the extent that's possible. I think that's all I have. Thanks so much for the presentation and the work you're all doing here.
John Brofsky?
Thank you. And thanks for the presentation. You mentioned that you're going to be putting out an RFP. Are we planning on using the same contractor that we used for East Fortieth? To me, it seems kind of like a no-brainer, although I know we need to look at the best cost and what we're looking at, but just lessons learned building one of these things a mile and a half from where we're at. Are we looking at the same contractor?
Well, due to public purchasing laws, we can't necessarily hire the same contractor without going through a formal process. So, right now, we're, we've got an RFP out for proposals for design consultants. Likely, the last consultant that we use will propose, but we know that there's other interest in it. So, we have a team, I think, of five that will evaluate those proposals, and then, so that's what you'll see first. And then, the construction will have to go out to a formal bid, so that will be awarded to the low bidder. That's kind of what we're looking to.
Low bidder or best suited? I mean, I know that we've seen some contracts where they score higher and it may not be the lowest bid, or are we tied to the actual lowest bid on this one?
I would have to work with our purchasing department. I don't, we don't have that answer right now. I know there's alternate ways to put the project out to bid, and I think it'll likely depend on how we decide to phase the contract and what different construction contracts we have, so.
Okay, thank you. Also, just one note, after this agenda item, I think I'm going to go to bed. It's almost coming at six o'clock in the morning here, so I will look at the other, at the other parts of the meeting later on.
Thank you, John. Appreciate your commitment to EWEB. Okay. All right, I just had a couple of quick comments. I understand that you're doing this historic mitigation workshop. I'm not entirely sure what that entails, but maybe it would be very interesting to see if there's like a time capsule or a book or something that comes with all these memories. I mean, we've had a proposal up there and weddings and other things. I mean, obviously, it's a very loved resource in the community, and it would be interesting to be able to commemorate that and have people share and put their memories into that to help with others. I am curious on the, so what radius did we do outreach at Fortieth versus kind of what's the expanded radius of outreach at the?
I don't remember the exact, like, mileage around East Fortieth. I do remember that once we expanded it, we were reaching out to about 250 neighbors in the area, and that was in addition to what we were doing, working with the Southeast Neighbors Association, utilizing their communication tools, our website, local media, et cetera. Compared to the College Hill, one-mile radius that I mentioned, there's about 1,000 customers that will be on that direct mail list.
Okay, thank you for the sense of scale. I think that's it. Thank you very much for all of your work. I am so excited to have you three taking this on, and I know that it's in very good hands. I just smile when I see you three together working on this project. Okay, and we will take a 10-minute break, and say goodnight to John, or good morning. All right, 10-minute break.
Welcome. Good one, our presentation's just beginning.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Lisa Krenz, Generation Manager. And for the first time in quite a while, I'm here to talk about something other than Leiber. I'm excited about. So I'm glad to see there's some folks here interested. Joining me tonight is Patty Boyle. She is our Carmen Smith License Deployment Supervisor. And we're going to be giving you an update on our progress towards achieving the requirements of our license, our FERC license of the Carmen Smith Heather Project. All right. Now, it's been quite a while since we did a formal update on the Carmen Smith Project, so I'll spend just a little bit of time providing some background and history to remind you of the following three items. Then we'll discuss our progress towards implementing the requirements of our license, including the current date, challenges we're facing, and there are quite a few. And then finally, I will take some time to talk a bit about the lookout fire that continues to burn near the project. Now, I know many of you are very curious about dam safety issues that we have near Carmen. We will touch on a couple of those very briefly as they relate to our ability to comply with the license requirements. We will be getting a lot more detail on our dam safety program at the October meeting. We'll make a focused presentation on the details related to that. So you won't hear much about the Trail Bridge Sinkhole Investigation this evening, but you will in a month. Good preview. All right. So since it's been a while, for context, I did want to quickly go over our project layout and how things work geographically to set the tone for the projects that we're going to be discussing later. Let's see if the mouse can... All right. Well, let's just focus up. On the very top is Clear Lake. That is the top of McKenzie Basin. From there... I can get the cursor over here. Yeah, does that cursor show up?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So here's Clear Lake up at the top of the McKenzie River. Clear Lake flows into Carmen diversion reservoir. This is EWEB's diversion reservoir, very low storage capacity at this reservoir. Really, the intent here is to divert water for the purposes of power production through a diversion tunnel, the Carmen diversion tunnel, as we call it, into our Smith reservoir that stores water until we want to generate it by sending, generate power by sending water through the power tunnel to the Carmen plant that's located here at the stream end of Trail Bridge reservoir. There are two units in the Carmen Power Plant. It has a mean capacity of about 83 watts. It does not reduce that on average, but that's the capacity. There are also a couple of bypass reaches, and then I'll end talking a little bit about going back up the river here. Carmen diversion, we divert some of the water through the power canal, through the diversion tunnel to the Smith reservoir. Then we have what's called the Carmen bypass reach, which is this section here. This is the McKenzie River. What spilled from Carmen diversion dam goes into this reach. The upper reach is called upper Carmen bypass reach. It ends at Tamalich Falls, which I'm sure you're all familiar with that location. That is a natural barrier to fish passage. Below that, we have the lower Carmen bypass reach, and that's why we named them differently because we have quite different resources for the entire fish. On the Smith side of things, what we spill out of Smith goes down the Smith bypass reach, which is the historic Smith River channel. Trail Bridge reservoir is at the confluence of the Smith River and the McKenzie River here. Trail Bridge reservoir operates as our regulating reservoir, so essentially what that allows us to do is use the Carmen Power Plant as a peaking facility, generate when we need the power and don't generate when we don't need it. So water flows from Smith into Trail Bridge, and then Trail Bridge acts by... The elevation in the reservoir moves up and down so that we can keep the McKenzie River downstream of the project at a normal flow regime. In addition to what's shown here on the map, we've got the spawning channel, which is just downstream here, and then, of course, the transmission line that takes the power from them. All right. Quick review of our license history. So a bit of a sordid story here. The original license was issued in 1958. It had a 60-year term on it, set to expire in 2008. And with licensings and relicensings, you generally need at least 10 years to go through that process. So the relicensing process began in 1999 with a final license application submitted in 2006. Then, once final license application was submitted, we were set to work on negotiating a settlement agreement with a number of settlement parties, which I'll give you who those are in just a moment. That settlement agreement was filed in 2008, the same year that the license expired. Then, between 2008 and when the license was ultimately issued in 2019, there were delays. Primarily, the original delay from 2008 to 2015 was related to some issues with the Wild and Scenic River designation, and specifically what actions, who had the authority to authorize actions within the Wild River area, and then also some boundary issues and discrepancies there. So we were kind of ticking away, waiting for things to happen. The Wild and Scenic River issue popped up and took many years to solve. During that time, power markets changed dramatically, and our estimates that went into the original economic analysis for the 2008 license application were no longer valid. So we requested at that time to go back to the negotiating table with our settlement partners to see if we could renegotiate some of the terms of the license. The settlement parties agreed. We did a renegotiation between 2015 and 2016. That resulted in amended and restated settlement agreement that was filed in 2016, and then the new license with a 40-year term was issued in 2019. All right. So the licensing or relicensing process really is intended to have an outcome that effectively balances power production from the project, including the cost of that power with the environmental and social impacts of that project. So licenses include provisions to mitigate environmental impacts, such as providing full river passage, and requirements to social benefits or improve social benefits like recreation, cultural, and historic preservation. So essentially, the licensing process is very similar to a triple bottom line approach with a regulatory nexus. For the Carmen Smith Project, like I said, we entered into an amended and restated settlement agreement with many agencies and partners. Parties to the amended and restated settlement agreement are shown here on this slide. They include federal and state regulatory agencies, both environmental agencies and land management agencies, includes tribes and environmental nonprofits. So these are the parties that we work very closely with for the deployment of our initial large projects, and we'll continue to work closely with them throughout the remainder of the 40-year license term. All right. So the license itself has boilerplate language, as most licenses do. The settlement agreement is what really outlines the majority of the major infrastructure and site-specific requirements. So when we talk about the license, we're talking about both the license and the settlement agreement because the settlement agreement is incorporated in whole into the license. So we'll use those terms interchangeably. They mean the same thing. There are seven management plans that were drafted and approved prior to filing the settlement agreement. They essentially make up large portions of the settlement agreement. Those are shown here on the slide. There's the aquatic management plan, which establishes for passage at Trail Bridge Dam, both upstream and downstream, potential for fish passage at Carmen diversion dam, depending on a number of factors there. It requires habitat for all the reservoirs in those bypass reaches I talked about, and then provisions that address fish stranding with mandated reservoir elevations and ramping rates. We have the recreation and aesthetics management plan. That requires reconstruction and ongoing maintenance of campgrounds and day-use facilities. It also includes provisions for signage and to manage key vehicles so that aesthetic of the project. We have the wildlife management plan that establishes goals and requirements for the management of 343 acres terrestrial habitat for wildlife. Those are primarily on our transmission line and near the Leiber project. And then, in addition to that, that management plan has some other items in there for protection of wildlife species via seasonal restrictions for construction and from noise disturbance, those sorts of things, and ongoing site needs. Vegetation management plan, very closely tied with wildlife management plan. It sets out our requirements to protect and enhance culturally plant species in addition to maintaining vegetation for our wildlife habitat. And we have the cultural and historic properties management plan, which establishes our requirements for protecting historic properties, of which there are several at the Carmen project, and then enhance and protect cultural resources. And finally, the roads waste and staging areas management plan that provides guidance for construction and maintenance activity, as well as road maintenance in certain areas. These were all the management plans that were originally submitted with the settlement agreement. When we went back and renegotiated in 2015, amended and restated settlement agreement, incorporated the most of these as they were originally written in 2008, the exception of aquatics management plan, which has some changes to it related to fish passage. Once the license was issued, we then drafted these other management plans that were required but not drafted prior to the license. That's a fire response plan, the water quality management plan, and the transmission line management plan. So I laid this all out here to give you a sense of the framework from which we're trying to deploy all these license requirements. The settlement agreement and the license, boilerplate license requirements together, total hundreds of requirements, ranging from relatively small, minor projects of water monitoring efforts to very large-scale, complex, multi-year construction projects. A lot to track, a lot to coordinate, and, you know, a lot of hurdles to jump through. Already gone over most of this, but just picked out a couple of things that I wanted to note as key license features. So these are by no means an exhaustive list. Again, it's hundreds of requirements, but these are some of the key things. I've touched on most of it already, but I'll draw your attention to the light purple fish above it. That is, these are major components out of the aquatics management plan. And just a reminder, the original license and settlement agreement application included the original fish ladder at Trail Bridge Dam for upstream fish passage, and the floating fish screen in Trail Bridge reservoir to provide for downstream passage. Those were the items that were very, very expensive that we went back to the settlement parties and renegotiated for. Now, in the license, which is a trap and haul facility at the base of Trail Bridge Dam, and using the Trail Bridge spillway for downstream passage, so the trap and haul facility for upstream passage, Trail Bridge spillway for downstream passage. Using the Trail Bridge spillway for downstream passage necessitates turning the power plant at Trail Bridge off for the purposes of actively producing power. We do still need to be able to operate that for safety reasons because it is one of the few ways we're allowed to move water through the project. But for the purposes of power generation, it will ultimately stop generating once permanent upstream and downstream fish passage are installed. That was the major piece I wanted to cover there. Just one quick note on the water quality management plan, because I didn't talk about the specifics there. That is a plan with requirements to monitor water quality ongoing and then stay within established criteria. So a lot of stuff goes on with trying to stay in compliance with all these management plans. Now, I'm going to pass it over to Patty to talk about projects we've completed today.
Thank you. So I thought it would be helpful to provide a little bit of information on both license required projects that we've accomplished so far and some of the projects that we have completed in order to refurbish the power-producing facilities in order for us to continue our reliable supply of hydropower. In this particular slide, the two pictures to the left are the turbine shut-off valves. Those turbine shut-off valves allow us to isolate the generating unit, one of which we're working on right now. These valves, very large valves, were replaced in order to facilitate that upcoming project. As a part of that turbine shut-off valve project, we also inspected and repaired the power tunnel, meaning it had to be deep-watering at the time. Deep-watering that tunnel was, it very rarely happens. It is done very, very carefully to avoid collapse or any other danger. Exactly. That was, it made engineers quite nervous, and we carefully planned and executed that, and there were no troubles, but it's not something we'd like to see repeated. And that's why those turbine shut-off valves are so important. It allows us to isolate the rest of the plant without dirty the power tunnel. And that, so that has been completed. It was, of course, assisted by the refurbishment of the crane to lift those valves as well in that far left hand. Slide one forward. We will talk a little bit about the refurbishment of the substation there at the Carmen Plant. We tore off the entire deck, which included all of the waterproofing membrane and replaced that, as well as the substation, including the switchgear. That was completed. Moving on to the next project. The first of the two units at the Carmen Powerhouse are being rebuilt right now. We expect the first of those units to be completed in this year. We'll run it for something 60 to 90 days to make sure it functions properly, and then we'll start tearing down and refurbishing the other unit. That unit should be completed sometime in 2025, probably after camping season in 2025. Then, moving on to our next slide. Lisa mentioned the recreation management plan. A couple of example photos of facilities that have been rebuilt to date. On the left is the new restroom facility, Ice Cap Creek Campground. It's just outside of our project area, and one of those projects that was a part of the Wild and Scenic issue, and this one was authorized by the USDA service, as opposed to a FERC license required project. On the right is just an example picture of one of the campgrounds and a newly refurbished Trail Bridge campground that is now complete and just waiting for our turbine projects to be completed so that the public can access it. Moving forward, one more slide. This is the expanded and improved spawning channel that Lisa mentions that's just below Trail Bridge Dam proper. We expanded the spawning channel and have now installed a temporary trap and haul facility. That picture on the left is, I think we have the date on it, but it was about two days before the fire started. Just in time, and we hope to use it this fall. So that has been completed. It is the temporary trap and haul, not to be confused with primary trap and haul, to be installed at Trail Bridge. We'll talk a little bit about why we have a temporary one here in a few minutes when we talk about mitigation. Moving to our next slide. So I mentioned a number of very large projects. Some of the smaller projects are equally impactful, although don't have large infrastructure requirements. The middle photo is a picture of an installation of a bird flight diverter on one of the transmission lines. We have bird flight diverters on all of the overwater spans of transmission or location pieces of the project. Those diverters give birds a visual, better visualization of the lines as they take off from the front water. They don't preclude birds from landing on the transmission lines or anything else. They just avoid that collision impact. On the left, there is a newly replaced culvert. We've both inspected and replaced any of the culverts that need to be either outsized or changed in order to facilitate fish passage. Those projects were recently relocated this summer. And then the far right is a picture of the relocated sections of the transmission line that were previously either crossing or in Deer Creek or in this riparian area. Those were relocated up the hill so that that creek could, was rehabilitated and re-vegetated by others, but include the transmission line in rehabilitation that happened. Previously, the transmission line clearing essentially cut the vegetation back such that more sun would go through, and it's a lot of the system, environmental, security area, people, personal spaces. And there's a long, long list of projects that have gone. It's getting a little late, and I could go on for a long time on all of these, but we, as a multidisciplinary team and working with EWEB's Generation Engineering Department, we're multiple projects each year in either categories of license deployment or power-producing facilities in order to maintain that reliable power and fulfill our commitments with the license. So that's the good parts. Then we move on to some of the challenges that really we need to address in any of these projects. So when we talk about challenges, some of the things that we have to be really careful to make sure that we know is the site itself has constraints. The construction period cannot start before the end of the high-flow period for DMSA purposes, and so that's usually sometime in June. It could be earlier, it could be later. And the construction season ends before high flows begin again or wildfire steps in or any other sort of weather-related event would preclude us. So we've got a rather narrow window of maybe 10, 10 or so weeks for construction. I point that out in part because when we experience a delay, it's very easy to lose a construction season. All you have to do is get a few weeks delay, and you may lose your construction season. So it has a pretty big impact. I don't have to mention anyone. We've got a wildfire now. We've had wildfires near the area that have impacted operations in each of the past two years, and I would expect those to continue to happen periodically, hopefully not back-to-back years. But it's something we need to have as a part of our planning horizon so that we have a safe evacuation for folks that happen to be working there. There's limited space, so construction projects have to be planned such that they do not conflict with each other as a contractor or impede circulation within, or we have a traffic management plan for what's going on within. That includes the public as well as contractors, so that could get complicated. The plant is remote, and staffing can be complicated by folks, whether they want to work in a remote environment with specialized skills and knowledge for our plant in particular. We do have staffing plans in place, but it can be difficult to find folks, and we've got requirements to adjust for. So we just try to make sure we're well ahead of them whenever possible, working with anyone. So I list those as site constraints, and that's all within the context of running the plant every day, 24 hours a day. So it's quite a bit, and those operators work really hard to make sure that happens. The picture on the right is a little bit illustrative of the dam safety issues that we're addressing. Background materials, went through a little bit of history on the discovery and current investigation of the sinkholes. Of course, as mentioned, we'll be back next month for greater detail there. There are regulators in dam safety having had a test that they cannot pick up or review the permit fish passage facility designs until we have a plan in place to address those particular sinkholes. And the regulatory time for review of projects, whether or not they're associated with dam safety, has lengthened. We routinely see delays in both the dam safety review and other regulators. They are challenged by staffing and workload as well. And so while we may be ready to move forward, until we get through a regulatory process, we can't put forward the contracts to actually construct, and that leads to delays. And so among these items, the DMSA issues that have delayed key fish passage projects and other delays caused by staffing or otherwise, those run into increased costs and requests from the regulators, in particular for fish passage delays, for mitigation for the impacts to the species that result from that particular delay. And so I was going to run through just a little bit on the mitigation piece. Now, that mitigation is in response to the resource agencies and their responsibility to administer the Endangered Species Act and the Clean Water Act. That's their basis. And because they're significantly delayed, they have asked for mitigation in a couple of forms. And one of those is to be able to temporarily trap and haul and examine, in particular from the spawning channel, and transport them above to Trail Bridge. So we designed and built this summer a temporary trap and haul and weather and fire-dependent rule, which I run it in the next week or so, and move 10 pairs of fish above Trail Bridge. They've also requested, and we have paid for, the fourth phase of the Deer Creek restoration project. That restoration, put back to what's put in place, stage zero design of aquatic habitat restoration in Deer Creek, and finalized that piece of the project. That was completed two years in advance of when it would have otherwise been put in place, therefore benefiting to seasons of fish production. Then, so those two things have been completed, requested and completed from a mitigation perspective. We've also got requests to contribute to funding for future We've also got requests to contribute to funding for future aquatic habitat projects. We have a request for, and are in the process of designing, stage zero type aquatic habitat in the Smith Bypass Reach and to provide some additional flows to support that habitat. And then also to consider ways to maximize the amount of available downstream passage through the Trailbridge Power Plant. Lisa mentioned that that was a part of their request, but we also need that power plant to be reliable, so it will be a bit of a balancing act between reliability of the plant and maximizing downstream passage. And we'll work with our regulators to find something that can improve of us. The point behind the reliability of that plant is so that we can build permanent downstream passage. And so I'm hopeful that that will work out fine because our interests in the long term are really actually well aligned. So that's the mitigation that we're discussing and ultimately hope to have that finalized sometime for the end of this year and have the opportunity to discuss that further this fall. Okay. Then the last slide for me is really just a snapshot of the master plan. And I don't intend to point out any particular projects here or identify any issues. It is really here just as an illustration of both the breadth of projects that it will take on in the upcoming years and the length of the timeline. We do our best to estimate realistically what it will take to complete these projects. And in some cases, when drafting the license and making commitments, we were overly optimistic. Sometimes circumstances have changed. We worked through with the regulators for delays or ways to improve the timeline. But in this case, what you see here is fish passage and a number of other projects going out for several years. And with that, I think I turn back over to Lisa for an update on the lookout fire.
Yes. All right. Thank you, Patty. So unfortunately, the wildfire situation this year provides a real-life example of some of those challenges and constraints that we're facing up at the project. You know, our staff, we have an incredible group of people working on deploying this license. We're very dedicated to getting things out in a timely manner. And every year, we've had something sort of knock us off of our feet. This year, it was the lookout fire. We had a number of projects that were in process. Thank goodness, we were able to finalize the temporary trapping hall just a couple of days before the fire broke out, but there are a number of other projects that are underway that have been impacted by this fire. Things do change quickly. I updated this at nine o'clock this morning, this slide, and it's already way out of date. So I'll give you the real update, just verbally. The fire did start on August 5th. I know you've been getting, as a board, regular updates via our AGM. It was a lightning-caused fire. The current size is over 24,000 acres. It's at 20% containment, and those are still the numbers as of this morning. Great weather conditions this past weekend did help the fire a lot. It was a little concerning last week when the Highway 126 was closed on Thursday and the fire was getting ever so much closer to our project. Just for reference, because this is a small map, so this is Trailbridge Reservoir right here, and this is Smith Reservoirs. And our campus, where our operators are housed and is the primary headquarters, is right here, basically at this bend in the road here. So very, very close to our project. We were moved to a Level 3 evacuation, but we did evacuate the project just prior to that, expecting that. So staff and contractors were evacuated on August 18th. We have, as an organization, been in ICS for several weeks now, watching this fire. We've been off the project essentially for normal operations for several weeks now. Fortunately, we did have the opportunity or the ability to operate the project remotely from our trading floor, and our traders that are running the project remotely have done an exceptional job. With that, we have also gotten throughout this process, for dam safety and public safety reasons, we need to get eyes on the equipment regularly. And so we have had operators who've been able to go to the project once daily for about, well, up to two hours or so to check on equipment and make sure everything's looking fine. We have had operators stationed both downriver in Lieberg, but then also over the mountain in Sisters. Should there be a highway closure, we had access to the project from both sides of the highway. This is changing tomorrow, so fortunately, as of today, fire, pretty low fire activity. Our fire responders have given us permission to go back and occupy the site on a more regular basis, so we will be able to do, basically return to relatively near normal conditions as soon as tomorrow and start doing some of the assessments for what damage may be there. So that's new as of about 11 o'clock today. Just a couple of pictures. So, you know, we haven't had the ability to fully assess the entire transmission line. That's actually happening tomorrow. The electric division is taking a couple of line crews out there along with landscape and foresters and others to take a look at what's going on there so that once we are able to get in there and restore the line, they can do it quickly and have the equipment on hand. These pictures were taken a couple of weeks ago as the fire was burning into the transmission line. By the way, that was planned. The transmission line provided a very good fire break for fire responders to stop the fire at. We do expect very, pretty minimal damage. There might be some insulators that need to be replaced and cleaned, but more come on that in the next couple of days. So when the fire first broke out and looked like it was going to get close to our project, our partnerships with the fire responders up there has just been incredible, and they have supported us and our facilities in a fantastic way. So Oregon State Fire Marshal spent several days with folks out there putting protections on our structures should the fire come into the project area. The picture on the left is a communication tower up on Smith Ridge. Picture on the right is one of our brand-new signs at, I believe, Trailbridge Campgrounds that was just recently installed, so hoping to protect that should the fire run in there. And then, of course, as you know, it's a remote project, and so our operators not only work there, but they live there at least half-time, and so they have homes there on campus. We've had sprinklers running to protect those homes, keep things wet. And then that's the picture on the left. And then the picture on the right side, our brand-newly refurbished one of our units at Carmen. What you see there is a protective cover being put on it to avoid damage from smoke, ash, and other things. So real, just a lot of thanks and gratitude to the fire response team for all their work there. Even though we expect pretty minimal structural damage, there are going to be some impacts related to this event, so there will be project delays. We are very close, if not already at the point of not being able to kind of pick up some of those projects that we had to walk away from. Again, this is old slide as of nine o'clock this morning. Since then, we do believe we will be able to move fish via the temporary trapping hall, perhaps later this week. So that's great news. And then finally, we will have, we do have lost generation. We have, the plant has been off for a number of weeks now. As of this morning, the estimate of lost generation is about $800,000. At the average Bogus prices, it's about $25,000 a day in lost generation, and we do expect it'll be at least seven to 10 days before we can re-energize. And again, more to come on that once we get our eyes on the equipment and see what it takes to restore everything. With that, open up to questions. Oh, I did forget one thing I really wanted to, I had it here in writing, but I very specifically wanted to thank the fire responders and also thank EWEB staff. Been in ICS for several weeks now. A lot of folks have been participating in that. Very specifically, I wanted to take, to thank the Carmen operations team, so they've been impacted more than most. They were not only, you know, had a kink put in their duties, but they have been physically displaced from the project. The picture there with the EWEB logo is the view from our camera up on Smith Ridge about a week ago when AQI was close to 1,200. Very, very tough conditions out there, and they have handled it all with just, with flexibility and patience, and I really appreciate that. And also to Chris Taylor, who has really been managing and coordinating very well with the fire response team up there. So with that, I will move on to questions.
All right. John Brown?
General question. Thank you. I started this like 16 years ago. When we first did this, I think we were, it was a financially feasible project. You know, we had four price, power price curves at $220 a megawatt. This was going to cost over $230 million. And those were 42 million over budget now. We haven't dealt with the sinkhole, we haven't dealt with other things. And we've gotten some more costs, but our prices are down into $30 a megawatt. Is this no longer financially feasible?
Patty, we knew you were going to ask that question, or somebody was. Do you want to take that, Patty?
So you're right. We completed the financial analysis in 2016 as we renegotiated the settlement agreement, removed quite a lot of costs associated with that fish passage, and reset to a financially viable project. And set the budget, and I'd have to look back at it.
$139.
And so the delays themselves have caused a number of cost escalations in addition to, I'm not sure if you identified that along with the dam safety pieces. We can rerun that analysis to check that, and that's something we can do. It has not been done to date. Some of those numbers aren't available for us to use right now. One thing I will point out is there's a conversation around, is it an economic project compared to, compared to what? Decommissioning this project is in the same sort of conversation. So your choices would be, is it economic, financially moving forward, or is decommissioning a better strategy?
I don't understand that. But I'm just thinking that if, when we initially started and we had a $220 million cost and we had $200 a megawatt power to justify it, now we're at $190 million, $181 million, and we've got $30 a megawatt power. To me, I already figured it out. So you don't need to go through that for me. I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't missing something because it sounds like the cost is going to go up more with sinkholes and with the fish mitigation.
Yes, I do think we will see additional costs in brackets.
And then real quick, on the $800,000, is that our lost revenue, or does that include our cost effects? Because when power went from $30 a megawatt to $1,700, we had to pay it. Does that $800 include that, or is that $800 our lost revenue? And then is there another cost lost for us having to buy replacement power because we didn't have Pki?
I'll have to double-check, but my understanding is that's inclusive with those very large, you know, those very high-power price days in August.
I got 10 seconds. So when you spill in the spring to get those holes downstream, are you going to fluctuate the river levels? Because you know how my phone rings every time that happens. Are you guys going to be fluctuating? Because you're not doing that now, and they get really sensitive to the point where we start messing with the upper, the entomology gets all messed up. Are we going to flush it, like, refresh it, or are we going to flush the small stuff in the river?
So the ramping rates that apply downriver will stay in place?
Okay, so you're not going to mess with the ramping?
We need to manage to those ramping rates.
Thank you. That's really good news. Appreciate it.
I have a question just about the water quality constraints that we have to state. Is that around temperature, or is it other?
Mostly temperature, yes. Yeah. Very cold up there. The Smith River Reach is the component where their regulatory agencies really want to keep an eye on temperature. We will be monitoring it throughout the project, though.
Thanks for the presentation.
So we shut the plant down when the fire started. Then you said that we were operating it remotely. What are we operating remotely then?
So one of the units at the Carmen plant is able to run on station service, so it can feed power to the campus, to homes, and to other things without, you know, putting electricity onto the transmission line.
Oh, okay.
So it runs as sort of a local, a local unit.
Yeah, that's what, like, the fire is coming to, we clearly shut down the transmission lines, we're simply going, okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
And that's really important because if we lose that, then, you know, we would have to run on generator power, which takes fuel, also means people need to be there to refuel it, et cetera, so.
Okay, got it. Is there any recourse for the 800K laws? There's like nothing else we can do. It's not like that's an insurance thing or anything.
I don't believe so.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much for the presentation. I appreciate all the hard work and spend a lot of there. So thank big thanks to the team and the one man up there. That's 1,100 is, I can't even imagine.
Okay. Thanks for hanging with us. Late night.
Okay. Future board agendas.
What would you like to know about future board agendas? There's, it's in your background materials. We have Brian's second favorite topic continues in October with some purple work. As well as we start, October is really the kickoff for our financial season, so October, November, December, Deborah Hart and her crew will start getting into the budgets and rates and the specifics of those, and so those are upcoming. Depending on the feedback I get around the DEI policy, we may or may not cancel the work session in mid-October, specifically for DEI. I'll wait to hear the feedback that we get relative to the policy. Other than that, I will be a little bit out of pocket the second half of September. Rod will be acting in my capacity while I'm not available.
Okay. Looks like nothing else on future board agendas. Let's go to board wrap-up. I wanted to quickly just get a check from commissioners on this setup. There's some challenges that have been brought to my attention, also trainer and how this feels, so I wanted to get feedback.
Didn't work for me because every time each one of you interacts with staff, I can't hear you. So I finally drug out my hearing aids after 10 years I've been sitting on these because I've been, I don't like it, but now they're out. Because when you speak that way, I can't hear you. And so I can overcome it by using these things, but I hate them. But, and then I did have a comment from Deborah, she said she couldn't hear you.
Don't feel like I'm a quiet person.
No, I have trouble hearing you too, so, shop. But it's, it's a...
Now, I can't, we have microphones. I mean, we used to have microphones in our old, in our, in the headquarters building, we had microphones. Can we not have microphones in here?
We hired a contractor to come in and do some work in here, so.
And when will that be done?
I'm not sure. I know we just got it on board, so. I don't know when they're scheduled to come in with this, or anything, but it should be this month. Oh, I'm sorry, I'll get back.
Sorry, I could, I, I just adapted. I just didn't hear you because, and it's nothing against you or anything, but we need to accommodate communications. It'll work. It's just that when you're, like, Matt, when you were speaking, having to interact, I couldn't understand what you were saying. It's not because you were speaking away from me.
Well, that means, I don't know, we constantly get complaints that people on, online can't hear us either, so, I mean, it's kind of all around. It needs help, and we've known this for a few months, so.
And I hate this setup. I've been...
I don't like this at all.
About when we're in a line like this, it's just kind of hard for us to interact with each other, I think.
I liked, I liked the U shape more. This was trying to help the audience hear us better, but now we can't hear each other either, so. I gave one and then set up another problem. I hope that we can go back to the U shape and then have microphones.
Yep. Yeah, commissioners, I think that if you just look at the amount of time during the course of a meeting that you spent interacting with each other, that far outweighs the fact that there's some people who might not be able to hear that interaction. Your interaction, other than public testimony, is a priority until we can get some of the technology upgraded. So it sounds like going back to the more, the closer-knit board... So, it sounds like going back to the more, the closer-knit board discussion, and then we'll all work on projecting during certain times for, of which the public might have an interest. So, this was an attempt to project toward the audience. We didn't have the audience that we have had recently, so this is continuous improvement at work, and we will revert back to that, and then we'll work on some other types of technology upgrades. Thanks for allowing our experiment.
You don't know until we try it, right? But I appreciate having the time clock available for them to see, you know, we turned it so they could see, but then I couldn't see, and so, anyway, you know, other challenges, other opportunities to improve. I also wanted to note that the language about reaching out to, to people testifying was removed from the public input piece. I'm just missing it here, but we added, we added the ability to reach out to them by adding contact information, but then we took out the comment that we reach out to them. We might want to revisit that if others agree that that's something else to want to do.
I would modify that a little bit, not that automatically, and I'll go back and double-check just to make sure. I'll work with Ann and Holly on that. It wasn't an automatic, oh, if you don't get it, because some people pose absolutely ridiculous hypothetical questions, and in our preamble, we committed to getting back to them on that. And then, this should be more, if the board directs for staff to respond in a certain way, we would be very much more pleased to have that degree of filter applied to it. It's not the...
So, maybe we don't need to add it back in. I just wanted everybody to be aware because it was commented that we reach out to people and we say it, and we no longer say it, so.
Yeah, I think this is, we need to, we'll work to strike the balance between the run-on hypothetical question to ask the question versus someone who's legitimately interested in a response that is otherwise unavailable or not responded to. So, that's, we're trying to strike that balance there.
Okay. Great. Anything else?
Just that we have a field trip.
We do?
Yeah.
See, everybody at 5:00 AM at the airport.
Yeah.
That, we don't have another work session this month. Just have the trip and that E-Web run to stay warm. Rafe, it's open. If you want to sign up, registration's open. Okay. With that, adjourned.